July 1st, 2021, to order please.
Yes ma'am.
Councilwoman Apple?
Here.
Councilwoman Batcock?
Here.
Councilwoman Ziegler?
Here.
Councilwoman Peters?
Here.
Councilwoman Penny?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reese?
Here.
City Attorney Moore? We'd like to welcome all of our guests here tonight. Glad to have you. We have approval of minutes. First is this Thursday's June 7th Special Counsel Meeting. Do I hear a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Right here, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Uh huh.
Okay, all opposed? Then we have the regular council meeting, June 10th. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed?
Is and what is outstanding, why we have so much time to sew it, can go on fiscal year, but we have on-duty depot, Fall-Gall General Partnerships, County Board of Education, the Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, Water Management Services, West Bank, which is our fleet bill, and then McHenry Contracting, which is our invoice from our building inspections.
Would you like to consider these one at a time or is it group? Yes, sir.
Motion to approve all.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to approve all.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want explanation of what Walmart Real Estate Business Trust is. I should know, I guess.
I asked that question to you.
Actually, it was, again, the tax assessor apparently overtaxed them, so the decision was to refund what the county had overtaxed and what the city had. We actually had no part of that. It was the county that sent that decision down to us. Scott, can you explain it any better than that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
Um, McHenry Contracting, how about, what is that period covered?
Um, actually, from like, he didn't invoice from February up until June 28th, and one of them is that big DCS, that's why it's so large.
Any other discussion on this? It has to be with council, I'm sorry.
Could I ask the council member to speak up a little bit? Can I speak, please?
Yes. Okay, any further discussion from the council? Okay, all in favor of approving as group these bills over 2000? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you, all right. The next item of business is citizens' concerns. If we have citizens from parties, we always allow them to go first, as part of citizens from parties who would like to express a concern of any kind. Okay, are there any other citizens who, yes, sir?
All right, I'll speak.
If you might pull the little thing over and just give your name and your address, please, tell us what you'd like to share.
Justin Malden, 136 Hilltop Drive. Couple of things you guys are gonna be voting on tonight, I just wanted to speak to. I know you guys have got the second reading of the public consumption exemption for special events ordinance. I know a couple meetings ago, I echoed what was spoken by Tim Frank, and I just want to encourage you guys to pass that as written, whenever that ordinance comes up, second reading, tonight. I know there was some stuff that happened during the first reading, some concerns that were expressed. I don't think it'll change anybody's mind on really how they feel about that, and I'm not gonna try to sway anybody's opinion other than say I support it, and I know that there's several that do. The other thing that you're gonna have is going to be the budget. One concern that I have with the budget, I know we talked about the property tax decrease, and you guys have discussed that, and passed first reading without a decrease. Looking at that budget, I know you guys have some projects coming up that you guys wanna plan for and look forward, there's a few things in there that kinda concern me. I know you guys have projected a decrease in local revenue after local taxes. I am not familiar with what you guys have discussed in your meetings, so I don't know what the reason for that is, and it looks like it's about a 10% decrease in taxes, and I don't know what that is being factored in for, how it's being calculated, but that's kind of odd to me, especially since I know property tax values just increased, so I know your penny values went up this year because it was a reassessment year, so you shouldn't be seeing more property tax money, and I know we've got new homes and stuff that are coming in, so property tax revenue should be going up. Sales tax, I don't understand it too, you know, there's a thought process that it may be decreasing or anything, I know there's a, from what you guys are anticipating, getting this year, you're projecting $200,000 less for next budget year. That $200,000 would cover that 25% property tax decrease if you had it budgeted in there. So just, you know, one thing that I noticed on the listed budget there that was kind of odd to me was that decrease, but I would encourage you guys, consider a decrease. You do the budget year by year, if it doesn't work out for one year, you can always change it in the future, you know, it's not a permanent thing. County just rolled theirs back, of course, I know that was a super large increase that they had two years ago, so they were working toward a decrease, but just consider that for the taxpayers. I know that there's things coming up, city's in a good spot now, you got a plan for the future, I know in this budget you guys are planning things, I appreciate what you guys are doing, so I ask you guys, just to consider that decrease.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. If you'll just tell us your name and address, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Baxter Key, I live at 204 Fisher Avenue, have a couple things to address to the council. First off is the paving of Main Street. I think it's well needed, but I think there needs to be some restriction, excuse me, restrictions on the traffic flow. I was leaving the Wayne's Place the other day, and there was a truck, regular pickup truck, a trailer with eight roundbells of hay, and we know how much they weigh. And instead of going up around on the bypass, he hung up right on the main street, drove right through town, and then across the bridge. And that's not gonna do the new pavement any good. Is there any way to put a stop sign at Carville River City Ball? Some of the council members have said that they're going to vote based on how their constituents have called them. I'm wondering if they've kept the log of the names and addresses of the constituents that have called them, and checked to verify that they actually live in the, excuse me, in the city limits? Because the 735 number goes well outside of the city limits, and with cell phones, it can make it near impossible to verify that they are. So, you know, they can be calling from anywhere and say, "I'm Cole Level, and I live at 206 Fisher Avenue, and I'm against it." And you would have no way to know without going to the post office and having them check the addresses regarding to the voter's registration office, and checking the addresses, to see if they are. So, you know, that's kind of a invalid, strange point. And the city budget and the increases, I know we have a lot of it, I know we have a lot of projects coming up and such, but I also know that the city has a fairly good amount of money in the coffers, enough that if we had a, for some reason that there was $0 income, the city could last a year. It would be nice not to have the taxes go up for a year. Because my mother and I both lived on a fixed, lived on a fixed income, and every little incremental increase hurts, and they don't, little increment of three or four dollars a year doesn't seem like much, but when you start stacking increments up, it starts turning to real money. And, you know, that's about what I have to say, but, you know, if you're basing your vote on the people that have called you and not verified it in any way, then I just don't think that's a logical way to base your vote, because, you know, they can be calling anywhere from the 735 prefix, and not be living inside the city limits. Yes?
I'm gonna address that, you're looking right at me, because I'm the one that kept count, and also those were the people that called that were for it. I didn't check where they live either.
I'm sorry?
It goes both ways.
Well, you can just ask, you can just ask them, you know.
But I'm saying it goes both ways.
Well, this is just, just expresses.
I'm sorry, could you?
No, I was just, I was telling them what the reasoning was.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry I didn't understand your question, sir.
It wasn't a question, I was just telling you it goes both ways.
I understand that, I understand that, but, you know, but to me, to make it a fair and valid, you know, just so there's some, just so you have something to, you know, to base it on.
Okay, thank you.
You know, that's all I'm saying, is that, you know, because the 735 number does not end at the city limits, is all I'm saying. You know, it can go anywhere, in large portions of the county, and with the 931 on itself, on the cell phones, they can be calling from anywhere. And that's the only reason I brought it up.
I agree with you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else's citizens want to address, citizens' concerns?
I'm sorry, there is one, no, I'm, this is an issue for another day. No, it's, it's another matter, but I, a different one.
If you need to tell us your name and address?
Sure, Dan Garner, I own 201 Fisher Avenue. I spoke last month, and I wanted to address some points on the change in the ordinance for, that's going to affect the River City Ball and any other nonprofit that wants to possibly apply for that. I want to address for the people listening that this seems to be a very peculiar timeline in how I feel a reasonable person may question how this council has come to this decision, and whether they use good faith in doing so. It's my understanding that a request was made on May 3rd by the River City Ball to put in, on the May agenda, a permit for planning and dates, because they're required to get bartenders by insurance and do all these other things, and they were asked to push that off until the June meeting. An event that's to be held almost a year in advance was asked to wait a month per the request of this council, which seems reasonable on its face, until you see there was a special call meeting for express purpose of attempting to push through a change in permanent ordinance, which would effectively end the way that this event is going to be structured and held. The next issue that I have is the order at which this called meeting was put out. I don't know where this was posted, I know it came out publicly by one of the council members, because he let everybody know. I know that the way that the rules work for the notice on the meetings, it has to be a reasonable notice, and I don't think Friday at noon, considering the offices of the city hall are closed on Saturday, Sunday, for a Monday meeting, was a reasonable amount of time, and I don't think your council agreed with that either, because you didn't wind up voting, reading, going to your first reading, like you had said on your agenda, and I also find it peculiar that in every other event that we're in here and we talk about, somebody makes a motion in a second, and then you guys discuss it, but you have this pretty well wrapped up on this agenda item, on the order that things are going to be done. So it's almost as if it was a preordained and a foregone conclusion. So, we've set up in two days to vote on an ordinance that's going to make a huge difference to a local event that just wrapped up and raised $23,000 for this community. And I sat through a meeting on my anniversary on June 10th, and listened to everybody talk, and to what the previous speaker spoke to, was a lot of, there was a lot of conjecture and hyperbole about all the bad things that could happen, and all the liability that we're facing, and all of this. For three years, we haven't had any of these problems. People sitting in this room have been to the event, people in this room have applied for grants through this organization, and all of a sudden, we now have to get rid of this ordinance, because we had a couple of phone calls. I also find it strange, per his question, how a meeting that nobody really knew about on Friday, got almost 200 calls to one person sitting on this council, and you can take offense to that, or you can create it however you want, but that seems strange, because I'll bet you don't get 200 calls on a single thing, probably ever, sitting in this council, okay? You should find this, at a minimum, odd and deeply troubling if you think about it. There are many opinions shared, even horrors of drunk people walking around the square, which I find appalling, that the way it was presented was very sad, and I have a lot of respect for the person that spoke on that, but he should have chose his words a little bit better. And this ordinance requires very strict protocols, a million dollars of insurance, professionally licensed servers, is a lovely event, and accusing people of attending that and being drunks is not only unfair, but is taking the lowest road possible while you're all pretending to take the high road to here in this meeting. The motion was offered in second if I remember, who's part of an organization that's made two grant requests, and should have recused themselves, or at a minimum, made a disclosure of personal interest, which I'd be interested to see what the policy, the council's code of ethics are, because I'm sure it addresses that, the state requires you to have that since 1949. And I'd ask you to talk to your legal counsel about that, section three and section four, but I was not shocked to find out today that you no longer have a legal counsel, so you don't even have anybody to advise you tonight on some of the things that I'm gonna ask you. So I want you to ask yourselves, did we act in good faith? Did we address any of the concerns of the ball committee? Because you obviously have concerns about this event. Did you attempt to come to a consensus with the community about a worthy and noble event? And I'm gonna say that you failed on every question as leaders and as neighbors. Finally, I'm submitting a formal request under the Tennessee Open Records Act for everything related to this ordinance, and I look forward to talking with you all again soon. So I don't know if you want this, or your secretary would like to have it, and I suggest all of you read this before you leave today, there's some very important information in there for you. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens' concerns? Anyone want to speak?
I'll speak.
All right, you just tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Pastor Sherman Keller. I have property on Little Creek Road, I'm moving my family back to Carthage. Now, most of my family lived in a wonderful area known as Gula Land. Gula Land, sounds like a wonderful place. It's a, it should be a wonderful place. But the gentleman before me talked about phone calls, about someone receiving close to 200 phone calls. But when you're a pastor, sometimes there's phone calls you don't wanna get. Will you come preach at my baby's funeral? Will you come preach over there, will you come pray over my mother in the hospital? I'm talking about alcohol. I'm talking about what it's done. I have, I have my own headstone over here, in Smith County Memorial Gardens. I have a row of my family through there. I could walk you, Mr. Evil, around, I could, for about a half hour or so, and show you headstones of people that died. My uncle Paul Silcox died up here on the way to the Bloody Bucket, had his head severed. He was riding with his nephew. He was drunk, too. And I'll talk to you about raising money. You wanna do something good for Carthage? This is the kind of community that people in Nashville are looking to move to. They're looking for a good wholesome place to raise their families, a place where they can bring them up, away from all the garbage and mess that goes on in Nashville, the wickedness that's happening in this place. Nashville is the fastest growing city in America, and it's overflowing, and people are looking for a place like this. You work on creating a community that people want to live in, raise their families in, go to church in, God will bless this town. You keep wanting to push pot, you keep wanting to push alcohol and liquor, and people are gonna go right past you to another town. If it's about money, if it's about revenue, if that's what it's about, what profit's a man? To gain the whole world and lose his soul? Now, I would imagine that most everyone in this room would identify as a Christian, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this. I almost hawked myself out of this, but I'm gonna give you a chance to either acknowledge that you're a Christian, or that you would deny Christ right now.
I love Jesus, and I'm a Christian, I'm a strong Christian, and I love my Lord and Savior.
Did you know, sir, though?
And I know not where Jesus is on my shoulder or my sleeve.
Excuse me, excuse me, this is just for citizens' concern.
Yes, it's a question, ma'am.
This really isn't to be interacted with, I appreciate what you're saying.
Okay, I would ask you if you would deny Jesus, or do you raise your hand that you love the Lord?
Sir, again, we don't interact like that, if you don't mind, that's not what, we just like.
If you don't stand before judgment one day, I'd ask that you would either raise your hand that you love the Lord, or you deny him.
Well.
He was denied three times once. All right, all right, and think about that when you vote.
We appreciate that very much.
Yes, I love each and every one of you, it's out of love that I come here, it's not out of hate or anger, or causing someone to not be able to make a dollar off a bottle of alcohol, but I'll tell you what, Mr. Jackie Carver up here's made a fortune off of dead people being put in there because of drinking and driving this town, this town's been plagued with it, I can't tell you how many times I've gone over and saw my brothers at the jailhouse, I can't tell you how many times I've gone down here to the hospital because of someone dying with liver cancer. I can show you right now, I could show you this afternoon over at Smith County Memorial Gardens, six graves, six left, places like the Bloody Bucket or downtown here, and they're dead now. They died in their sin, and anyone that is helping someone to sin, is participating in their sin, and they'll be judged for their sin. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Could we, any more citizens, please?
Madam Mayor? I'd like to speak again, please.
Well, I, cancelled, and just moved over there.
I'd like to speak again, please.
If it's free, please, we usually just let everybody else have a chance first, if there's anyone else.
There are some people who are afraid to come up here tonight because they've had threats, citizens of this town, people that hang out, Mr. Evil's town have been threatened.
Sir, you've had your moment.
They've been threatened.
Excuse me, gentlemen, excuse me, excuse me, let's keep the civil, please.
TVI will be talking to you, sir.
Okay, excuse me, everyone, please, just let's go down.
My name is Baxter Key, I speak at 20, I live at 204 Fisher Avenue, and in response to this gentleman.
Well, and again, this is about your concerns, but let's don't address anyone here.
I'm gonna keep a face for my husband.
Please do, please do.
In response to this gentleman, 45 years ago, we were going to South Carthage to buy our beer, and Harshville to buy our liquor, so we were traveling 20 miles down the road, and I don't know, a whole lot more than six grave songs that are up there, and I pray for their souls every night. But, you know, the thing is, there are people in this town, in this county, that think they are without sin, and that is a sin. So think about that when you vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' concerns? Okay, then we will move on.
I'll be glad to talk to you.
Excuse me, it's, thank you.
Okay, we live here in Central, Tennessee was a state.
Miss Key, thank you.
I'm here, sir.
We'll move on now to the mayor's report, I do have some good things to report. First of all, as you all know, our swimming pool is going to be open this Saturday, we're all excited about that, I think the whole county's excited about it, we wanna, we wanna thank everybody who was involved with that, the pool company that did this was American Exterior Supply in Lafayette, they did an outstanding job. If any of you, we've got some pictures that we'll share at some point of beginning to end, they literally tore the pool apart and put it back together, you know, with new lines, skimmers, filters, pumps, drains, and the whole lining was redone with plaster, so it's like a brand new pool, isn't it Sally, it's wonderful. Even the baby pool has some new features to it, so we wanna thank everybody involved, all of our Public Works crew, everybody that works so hard, Les, Derek, Chaz, Kim, Jason, Jesse, Michael, everybody, thank you so much for everything you did to get this together. And Miss Sally, thank you, kudos to you for keeping our pool running and all the great things you've done through how many generations now, no telling how many kids you've censured. Censured, okay, that's about true. Well, thank you to everybody who did that, because I'm excited, it's just beautiful, it's prettier than I've ever seen it, so thank you to everybody involved in that. The dog park is moving along, our young boy scout, we're running to the same problem we had with the pool, and all of the things that we are trying to order are like six weeks, eight weeks out for delivery, but, but we're slowly getting what we need. We can't open it until we get all the things legally inside we need. One of the great things is we do have some waste stations coming, that's one of the major things we need in there, so that'll be opening, I hope in a few more weeks we get that open. Walking tracks moving on, Evan can tell us more about that. I wanna remind everybody, Ball State class, first time ever in person here in this room with an onsite professor for statistics, which is a required course for associate's degree and nursing degree, so anyone you know who's trying to get a unit, those, please tell them they can take it right here in Carthage now, which is wonderful. Last time, the market fest, the next one of those is August 7th, which is a Saturday, at the city walking track, from 9 to 3, so you can know any vendors who would like to be part of this, this is a great opportunity, they sold out at the last one, so we will have this one and two more. So that's August 7th, which is a Saturday, from 9 to 3. And that's my report, so we'll skip on down to our city recorder, anything you'd like to share.
Yes, council, I just wanna let you know that I have been in touch with a couple of commercial appraisals, I have not got a quote yet, one referred me onto another person because I just don't have the time, people are about long, but as soon as I have quotes, I'll bring them to the meeting, just so, I don't have one yet. I've reached out to three so far, so just gonna pay on that for the citizens voting.
Thank you. And our police chief, up here.
Have you talked to Maynard Appraisals in Cookville?
Uh, is, I don't know, is that the one you gave me, Evan, that was out of Cookville? I have left a message for somebody in Cookville, I don't, I'd have to look.
Maynard Appraisals, they do commercials.
Then, if that's the one Evan gave me out of Cookville, there was one out of Cookville, one out of Harshville, the one out of Harshville referred me to somebody else, and that one from Cookville has not returned my phone calls or my email yet, so just waiting to hear back from them.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Chief Davis of the police, do you have a report, please?
Yes, I turn in my monthly report to y'all like we always do, if you have any questions about that, please feel free to ask. The only other thing I can think of is that we finally had our patrol car finally, all the equipment getting installed, and this is from this last fiscal year, it was ending right now, so it just ended in the end, so I think we finally got it pretty much situated and operational, so y'all can see it on the street, that's what it is. Y'all have any questions for me, please? Hi, miss.
Thank you. For Public Works, Mr. Leslie is a little under the weather, so Derek, would you like to report for him?
I don't, he didn't have anything to report, I think everything's running pretty smooth. Y'all have any questions or comments or suggestions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you. Then we get to do another report from Water Sewer, how would you?
Everything's running smooth on the Water Sewer side, but I'll take any questions or wherever you go.
Okay, all right, thank you. Water Flats, Rusty?
I have no formal report, but I had hoped to bring some price quotes in tonight for a mixer for our city tank on the hill. I had gotten some verbal quotes that were less than 10,000, but when my written quotes came in, the cheapest one I got was over 10,000. So I guess, I don't know what the proper procedure is, but I guess what I'm asking is if maybe you can add an item in new business tonight, so that I can bring this up then, to start the process, so I can accept some formal bids, and you can go from there.
Would you, are y'all okay with adding that as the last new business item? Okay, Steve?
Make the motion to amend that, to add that to the agenda this evening.
We have a motion in second, adding any discussion on that? Just to repeat it, it's to allow you to take some bids for the.
Yes, not to, not to do the work, just to, if it's over 10,000, I've got to advertise and take bids that way. I had hoped to get under that, so we could avoid that and get it, move along with it, but it didn't work out.
So, if the motion is to add. So, if the motion is to add, uh, discussion about taking a bid for the mixer for the water tank and...
And, and when we get to that, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them about why we're doing it or what it does.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Tim to get his bids while we're in the middle of this. Go ahead and do it.
Uh...
We add it to the agenda. Just go ahead and knock it out.
Well, we added it to new business. Are y'all all okay with that? I mean, that's, we have a few more reports to do.
Second.
Could we at least finish the reports?
Second. We need a vote.
Okay, all right. Uh, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor of going ahead and allowing Tim to take, excuse me, I'll hear again, Rusty to take bids on this.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do that. Okay, then the next report is from Steve from the Water Sewer.
We don't have anything. Everything's running. It's going on unless y'all got some questions for us. We're good.
Okay. Okay. Chief Hyatt with the Fire Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have my written report. And the only thing I would add is later on on the agenda, you're going to be looking at a bid for the fire station expansion. I just want to remind y'all, if we don't get the bays, then I'll place part another apparatus, another apparatus. I can't read eyes on four, possibly not even five, wireless. So, just want to put your mind to that. I'll have anything else, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, CBO Scott?
Uh, each of you have a written report and you got, first time in a little while, I guess, financial statements, balance sheet, statement of revenue expenditures for each fund. Uh, at some point in time, not everybody understands how to read financial statements. Uh, be glad to go over any of that with you at any point in time as far as that goes. The big thing is, uh, just for you to consider, uh, as item number two, uh, you'll be considering the second budget ordinance this evening. Uh, Chief Hyatt's just mentioned the fire hall expansion. Uh, you know, we had budgeted originally for that about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and it's two seventy-five is the bid you're going to consider. So, if you, if, uh, if you choose to do that, we will add that into the second budget ordinance, okay, before we submit it to the Comptroller. So, just want you to be aware of that increase. Uh, and just want to make sure everybody understands the process for the budget. Uh, we are now under what's called a continuation budget, um, from the Comptroller. And what that means is, uh, you basically keep the budget that you had for the prior year until you adopt a new budget. If you finish the second reading tonight and approve it, uh, we have fifteen days from the date it's approved to get it to the Comptroller. Uh, if deliberations continue and we don't have a second reading and approve tonight, uh, we have until August thirty-first to ultimately get it to the Comptroller's office. So, just wanted you to be aware of those facts before you consider. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our grant writers aren't here. Uh, Evan, would you like to do, you're on the agenda for part of the engine, and would you like to, does anything else to...
The what?
On the agenda for Lane Street and for, uh, for the fire hall.
The grants, our RTP grants with the park. It started. They poured the concrete, ADA parking area. They poured almost all of the drainage ditch we put in. Uh, they're gonna make one more pour on Monday, uh, is what they're telling us. We've been here for a pour. As part of the RTP grants, you have to have concrete breaks and, um, certification on the concrete for them to pipe for. So, we've been here for, the pour is gonna be here for the others. We laid out the new parking trail for him and that's what he's gonna start on next before he does the, the existence. So, he's gonna put the, he's gonna get all the base stone down for the, before he brings the papers in. I'll take questions or comments on that. If not, I'll address the other projects later.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to unfinished business. Uh, the first item is animal control. That's Councilman U. Do you have a motion to...
I'd like to motion that we move this to the, uh, first item of the agenda next meeting is, um, Ms. Pelham, who is gonna be sharing the ideas, who's much more educated on this issue than I am.
Okay.
Is not able to be here tonight. So, if I can motion to do that.
Second. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Second.
All paid.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we move it to, okay, all right. Um, the next item is city attorney applicants. We put this, um, RFQ, our request for qualifications out to MTS. They posted it everywhere. We posted it in the courier. And we had one response by the deadline just a couple of days ago. And that's Attorney, um, Tom Walsh, who is here. We've handed out this. He's here to answer any questions you might like to ask on him. Attorney Walsh?
Yeah, I'm here. Somebody up here?
Yes, please come here, please. If you'd like to tell us a little about yourself.
Good evening. Everybody. My name's Tom Walsh. Uh, I've been practicing law for fifteen years. As I set forth on the RFQ, I don't have any municipal experience. Uh, typically practice in contracts, commercial litigation, um, other matters that don't really have anything to do with municipalities, but it does dovetail into what y'all need. Uh, typically, my, you know, theory of practice is look at things objectively and advise honestly. Uh, you might not like what I tell you, but I'm gonna tell you the law. Y'all have any questions, just let me know.
Would you like to ask any questions? Any thoughts, Steve?
Yep.
Um, are you familiar, have you practiced much law as far as like political law, as far as, um...
I, no, honestly, I really haven't. I spoke with Todd, uh, called Todd today. Mayor Smith, uh, called me a couple of weeks ago, uh, informed me about the RFQ. And I was actually here last time. I spoke with Todd. I know he's been here a couple of years. Spoke with him today, actually, about, uh, this statutory scheme, some of the resources that, that he would use, uh, kind of what it would take to wrap my arms around, hey, this municipal law. Had about a thirty-minute conversation with him. We both agreed that it's like most areas of law, once you get your hands around it, it's, it's, you know, it's all written down. The law is an open book test. It's there. I know the statutory scheme out of Title VI. I know you guys are governed by the Charter. As far as contract work, contract law, I've been doing that for fifteen years. If you guys have any contracts with either T-DOT or T-DEC or whomever else, I, I'm more than capable of dealing with that. I believe, uh, after speaking with Todd, he seems to be leaving y'all in pretty good shape. I, I think he's got some, uh, T-DOT, T-DEC contracts that are, I think, might be on the docket tonight. And he's got the letter drafted, so that's complete. Uh, anything else, again, as far as contractual law, um, transactions, that, that's what I do. I've been practicing for fifteen years. I went to the Nashville School of Law. Uh, while I was there, I was Thomas W. Brothers, a judge at Nashville. I was his judicial officer. Uh, the year after I graduated, I was his law clerk. Then I went with Gideon and Wiseman, which is a medical malpractice firm. And what I did there was fair hearings, which is when you go and yank doctors' privileges who aren't, you know, when a hospital, when a hospital sees a doctor is performing poorly, you go in there and you yank their privileges. And there was a lot of similarities in regards to the bureaucracy that I kind of expect out of this from what I've seen so far. Uh, after that, I got, uh, I live in Lebanon, uh, so I opened a practice in Wilson County. I did that for five years, solo practice. Was retained and hired by Rochelle McCullen, Alds out of Wilson County to run their Mount Juliet office. I did that for five years. And then, uh, actually this June, I started a firm with my partner in Atlanta. I've done a lot of work with him, uh, a lot of arbitrations, um, with him, trademark practices. So, opened a firm, Shiantollar Walsh, started that in June. We've got offices in Atlanta, Nashville. We have a virtual office in Nashville and I'll be practicing in and around the Lebanon area. Any other questions? Yeah?
Um, I'm sorry. Um, you applied before, didn't you?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. When Mr. Todd did.
When Todd did. And I think, and I spoke with Todd, and Todd had municipal experience. I did. So, I absolutely understand, uh, the decision to hire him. He's a good attorney. Uh, I think what came out in the last meeting was we have similar views of practice. Again, what, what, an attorney's job is to do is to look at things objectively and make a determination, uh, on, on the contract or whatever, and then advise honestly. And again, you guys might not like what I tell you. I have a lot of clients that don't like what I tell them. Uh, but it's not my job to tell you what you want to hear. My job is to represent the interests of this town, uh, and, and do it from an objective standpoint. But yes, sir, I did.
Yeah, I understand that, uh, your, when we asked you your questions with Todd, questions, they were very similar. The answers were. I just recall that.
Or anything else?
Any other questions you have?
Uh, and this isn't to scare y'all.
I haven't looked scared yet.
Um, we've gone through, we're on our third city recorder, we're coming up on our third attorney, a couple CMFOs. Uh, so, it's kind of a quick turnaround break. Is your, are you looking at sticking around for a while on this? Are you gonna see, kind of test the waters, see what's going on? Kind of what's your intent?
No, I plan on sticking around. Most of the clients I have, um, I've had for ages. I've, um, served on their boards and directors. Um, I have a lot of clients that I've had for, you know, ten, twelve years. Uh, and, and I, again, I spoke with Todd, uh, honestly about it and said, hey, you know, what, what's going on with it? Um, and, and for him, it was just, it was a time thing. I mean, he's in, he's in Brentwood. He's south of Nashville and the drive was two hours in. You know, especially in Nashville traffic. I'm in, in Lebanon. It was, you know, it was pretty much in thirty-five minutes. So, you, no, I plan on sticking around.
I might add that I, I have asked about you, some attorneys I know, and they highly, speak very highly of you.
Yeah, if y'all want, um...
It means a lot to me.
My, the way I practice is pretty much all my clients have my cell phone. I know you can call me whenever, uh, text me weekends, evenings. It, it really doesn't bother me. I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Um, I, I think in the RFQ, you've got my, my hourly billing. Um, you've got any other information you need, just give me a call. I know the mayor's got my cell phone number. I'm more than happy to give it out to whomever and, uh, and just let me know. But I think Todd's leaving you guys in good shape. I don't know if there's anything, um, necessarily pressing. Certainly some issues were raised, but, you know, once, uh, once retained, if y'all vote to retain me, uh, start working.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, fantastic. I appreciate y'all's time. Again, if you have any questions, Mayor Smith, feel free to give my email, my number, and, um, I'll let y'all vote or not vote or do whatever and then see y'all later.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Smith, would it be appropriate time for us to make a decision on this or are we looking at doing this at another time?
Well, the sooner we can get an attorney...
All right, well, I'd like to, um, make a motion to, um, accept, uh, Attorney Walsh as our new city attorney.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Um, if you would like to have a seat while we discuss, yeah, or you may want to, uh, is there any discussion?
Tell you what, why don't, why don't we do this? I haven't officially been retained yet. I'll let y'all do it. You call me tomorrow. Let me know how it goes. I'll get you an engagement letter over.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll get going.
That's good.
If the vote is in favor.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Y'all take care.
Thank you. So, we have a...
We have a motion, second.
And we have a motion and second. We have discussion, Mr.?
I question whether we are rushing into this. I know we need an attorney very badly, but I'd like to see if we could possibly find somebody with more municipal experience.
I'm very open to that if we can. We put this out to MTS. We've called around. Even with some of the cities, they don't have the same municipal. They just have local attorneys. Yes, sir.
When did we put that out?
Gosh, that was about, I've got my, oh, no, no. Yeah, we put it in, in our local paper. MTS put it in all their professional papers.
I'm not opposed to that, Sam. I just, I, I feel like it's, it's, we're hired. You know, it's, it's tough to hire anybody right now.
I mean, he's a nice guy. I'm sure he's intelligent. I have him down on that, but...
Yeah.
Uh, we've brought up some really big issues in the time I've been on this council regarding municipal law. And, uh, I just think we might find somebody with a little more experience.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Sam. I think we should give it a little more time. We give it in a month. Let's give it one more month. Re-advertise it, invite him back, and then we go from there. I think we were just picking the one that showed up. I think we should get a chance to interview more people and maybe advertise in different places.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, the only thing is, uh, I think I voted for him before. He impressed me before, so that's, that was, uh...
I mean, if, if you all are okay with...
So, I'm already, yeah.
If you all are okay with waiting another month, I'm happy to reset my motion. I mean, I, I say, I think that's a good point.
Do y'all have some thoughts on this?
I think it should be pushed off till next month.
I think try again and see if we can get, he does seem like he would do a good job. I'm not against him at all, but if we could take a little bit more time, I think we should try that extra effort.
We can certainly send it out again. We'll go probably...
What about surrounding counties? Have we put it in newspapers in surrounding counties?
Well, I have called various mayors in the surrounding counties. Um, again, a lot of our cities around have the same kind of situation. It's local attorneys who do this, who don't. We, we lucked out very honestly to get Mr. Moore with that kind of background. That's very rare. Yes, sir.
I guess that, I think we should just expand our advertising, not just call the local mayors. Maybe advertise them different papers further out. Maybe, maybe they're not getting all the attorneys like himself. I mean, we...
Definitely, there'll be larger firms in all...
We don't want to get them too far along.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. MTS, when we send it to MTS, they have a professional board that they send out everywhere, just like every city that we have. They, it goes on their boards. But we can certainly try it again. Yes, sir.
Just to play devil's advocate, I mean, I have no issue resetting this at all, but we are gonna be left open for another month on this. And, uh, any major decisions that we make, we ain't gonna have an attorney. So, just keeping that in mind. If you are still okay with that, or some of the motions, so...
The, the other thing to keep in mind is we do have a lot of legal counsel with MTS that if we had a major problem, we could turn to them and they could guide anybody that we have. In fact, sometimes Mr. Moore turns to them, I think, in some situations.
Also, I think it'd be fair to hire them and then get more people and decide to hire somebody else again, too. But we need to, I, I do think that if we, I'm gonna reset this motion, so officially reset it, but, um, we need to make a decision next month regardless. And if he is, or only have a good next month, then it is what, it's what we got. And I'm not saying that he's probably very qualified. I like him. I liked him last time, too. I just kind of stuck to the same, same boat, getting work and experience. But, yeah, so, I'll reset my motion.
Okay, do I have? Yes, sir.
Motion to move this agenda item to next month's business. And if coal allowed, put this in front so we can do this first.
That's fine.
And put this first on the agenda for next month.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move it to the first agenda, unfinished business next month. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
This is just council. I'm sorry. It's only council now. I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I would like to point out that I don't remember where I operated in the Tennessee Codana State, but without legal counsel present at this meeting, it is an illegal meeting. You're supposed to have legal counsel present in some form. But this entire meeting is invalid.
I mean, we'll, we'll double check that. We'll double check that because I'm not totally sure about that.
If it is conducted, it is null and void.
And point of worry, that would be just a situation that, you know, we don't, we don't know if what he's saying is true or not right now because of that. So, I do, um, if I make a second motion, council or attorney, that we make sure we check into that because otherwise, especially since we're gonna be voting on the budget tonight, that, that is applicable because otherwise everything we do tonight is just null and void. And if that is true, I don't, I don't know if it's true.
I will bring this up because I have been in contact with MTS about our situation. I believe their legal would have told us if this was the case. I'm not to say that it may not be, but I believe they would have... I'm not to say that it may not be, but I believe they would have advised us if that was the situation. But we'll certainly check it out, certainly check it out.
Item three.
Okay, we, I wish we had a way, you give us like a specific where you found that, so I can check. Would you give us a specific place, time, whatever publication where you found that?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Could you give us a specific publication and how I would locate that?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I can't.
Where did you get your information?
I read it in the Tennessee Code of Annotate. When I was laid up, when I was laid up in cancer several years ago.
Do you have a number where we can reference?
When I was laid up with cancer several years ago, I read the Tennessee Code of Annotate.
Okay, well.
I'm sure MTS can answer that question, though.
We've had meetings without an attorney here before, many times.
I believe MTS would have already advised us that that was the situation, because they know our situation right now, so I hope we're okay.
I don't think it's an issue, but I do think it would be us to check on MTS.
Okay, thank you, we'll check it out. Okay, our next item here is, we have several agreements, loan agreements, and Mr. Moore has read through all of these, and says legally they are fine. The first one is for the long-awaited INI project that we have, sewer project, that we've been waiting on this loan agreement forever. The bond fund, TDEC finally gets.
Motion, oh, I'm sorry, would you intend a motion to approve this? All right, motion to approve this loan.
Second.
So this is actually to approve resolution CR 20210701B, and that's to allow us to go forward with the loan if we need to sign, sign an agreement to take this loan.
Are you going to B or A, Mayor?
No, I'm sorry, I'll do this one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm starting with this one first, because the other one has a.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so, any discussion about that before we vote?
Yes, I do have just a little, couple points, but we might not need to do that with this, but I, we've got this, not supposed to budget for yet. I want to get this friggin' project done, that's been going on since I've been on the council. But we've got this American Rescue Program Act for like 626K that's been coming in, and we could possibly be using that for. No, no, not, I understand, you don't mind me finishing. We could possibly be using that for sewer, water sewer projects. And that's going to be a big chunk of change that we can use for water sewer projects. There's a lot of other things in our general budget, it's pretty tough to do, but for water sewer, it's going to be a little bit easier. But also, we've got several million dollars of it as well, so this is something I think that we've really gone through. We've really done our research, we've really worked on this for several years, so I think we can go forward with these loans. But just keep that in mind, here in the next few months, when we do get access to these funds, because we're a smaller community, we don't get access as soon, that we will have this chunk of change that we can probably put towards, because it's in the COVID category of public health, it's water and sewer.
There's three main categories.
Yeah.
Sewer, water, and central paper.
Yeah, so, but anyways, I just wanted to put that out there during discussions.
Any part of your name in your motion?
I don't remember.
I think me or Sammy were.
Your motion and I second.
Is there any more discussion about, whether, is there any more discussion about the approval of this resolution? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Thank you. The second one is the long-awaited Futuro Alley Water Line. It has a companion agreement with engineer, yes, sir?
Motion to approve.
So motion to approve the resolution that to, to go forward with the loan and allow me to sign that contract. All, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now, the companion piece with this is the engineering contract that goes along with that, but we, we already have approved the engineering contract for the INI. We're having to prove this one, it's with Water Management Services, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, second? Who's second? Second, okay, any discussion on that?
Who, what's the, the company is?
It's the same company, Water Management Services.
Same one, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Thank you. Okay. Okay, next, we have the fire hall bid, Evan, would you please, Mr. White, the engineer? He has the bid calculations.
So we finally got the fire hall bid. We had to rebuild it, so. We had two attorneys this time. Y'all got the bid tab in front of you. There's about $2,022, so that's less than like 1%, that's almost unheard of. As far as getting two contractors to come in that's that close on a set of blueprints, so I feel like your prices are as good as they're going to get at this point in time in construction. You've got my letter of recommendation, we've checked on Johnson Construction LLC. They've done many commercial buildings that are well-equipped, and that's, our recommendation is to approve them. If you're willing to put the three bays on the fire hall, if not, you do always have the opportunity to reject any and all bids.
Yes, sir?
I'm making a motion that we approve the three bid, the bid on the fire hall by Johnson Construction LLC for 275, 140, 93, yeah, 93.
Okay, we have a motion, so I'll hear a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the bid from Johnson for the fire hall extension, any discussion on that? Yes, sir?
I was looking at the deal with the roof on it, that does not include the roof.
I'm sorry?
We were looking at doing a roof on the fire hall.
Existing?
No, no, no.
I thought I saw, hang on, give me one second, so I can source what I'm talking about.
Chief, are you?
We have linked in our current roof, this will be for the expansion.
This is on the expansion only, yeah.
Okay, give me one second, I'll source what I'm talking about, so that way y'all don't think I'm crazy. There's a bid under Fire Hall General Fund Budget Roof Replacement, it's on the capital outlier, capital outlet expenditures on page 11. There's a rackling roofing bid forward, so that's what I'm curious on that, because.
That's a different project, though, isn't it?
That's for the current building.
For the current building, okay. So we're looking at, are we going to be tying, that's what I'm curious about, are we tying those roofs in together? Are they going to be two separate roof, what are we looking at?
What, they'll take the existing panel off on, on the, I want to get my bearings, southern side, it's the only place that overlaps.
Got you, so it's just, it is going to be considered two separate projects, they'll, they'll be good to go, okay. I was just curious if that was something that we could, I just didn't want to make sure we're double funding it.
Unless you want to go right here, I mean, you could technically, once you get a contract with Johnson, you could see what he would put the roof on while he's there doing the other, you would do have an opportunity.
I think that'd be a great idea.
But that, I didn't know anything about that, about that portion, or what could have.
I just saw when I was reading the budget, I don't know anything about it either, so.
Hey, we have any further discussion on using this company to do the fire hall extension of three bays?
We need it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item is our product charter, it went to, it was an initial vote in 2019, it went to the legislature, and came back recently from there, in order to approve what has been done, we would have to ratify tonight. And that's the resolution that we have here, resolution CR 20210610A-1.
Mayor Smith, I saw Councilwoman Knappel's email about that, I do agree with her. I do, I think it would do us well if we had MTS come and discuss that, and so in a way, the public can understand exactly what it is we're voting on as well. It's been a while. So I would like to, as much as I, you know, I'm for this, I get what's going on, not everybody does, and we need to make sure everybody does know exactly what we're voting on, especially we got a new council in since that happened, because we were going to originally vote on it last year, but COVID, so. So I would like to motion that we table this item to unfinished business next month, it's item number three. And invite MTS.
Let me just interject here, we have 60 days from the day the governor signed this to vote one way or the other. What you could do is vote not to ratify and start over again, but you have 60 days as a window to do anything about this.
When did he sign it, though? Can we know when the clock started?
Yeah. The 19th of May.
So, let me, let me rescind my motion, though. I.
This is, this is what we got back from them, basically.
I don't feel that it's, I don't feel it's fair to our new council members, and council members that don't remember, but we need to, we, this takes years to do, obviously, so we need to address this, and I don't want a special call meeting, but we need to do it, it's not about me, it's not about what I want, it's about doing the right things for the citizens. So I think we need to have a special call meeting, invite MTS out on it.
Okay, do we have a discussion?
Sure.
Well, I was going to make a motion.
Oh.
But, was that a motion?
Oh, I just.
You kind of said it, so I didn't know.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, let me make a motion, but we need to put a date on it, so I don't know what the date is on it. But I'm going to motion that we find a date that MTS can get out here, talk to us, and we have a special call meeting, and just to discuss this issue alone, and have that.
Second.
So.
So just, so we know, it would have to be before, it would be before May 18th.
When, July?
July 18th.
July 18th, so we need to do it fast.
Okay.
We can vote on it then, too, or we can, I'd say we need to vote on it then.
The week of the 11th.
Well, again, my understanding is we can't change, that's what MTS said, we can't change anything. We either have to ratify it or not ratify it.
That's correct. What, what we're saying, Mayor, is there's, there's a lot of language in there, and there's, there's items here from the old charter, and items here from the new charter, and MTS is pretty good at explaining to the council and the public what these changes are. And this is something that takes a long time, we either, we either prove it or we don't, we can't touch it, we can't do anything about it. So we just want, we just want MTS to be able to explain what it is.
So you want to do a special call meeting before August, July 18th?
It would have to be next week, the following week I won't be available.
Well, and it's either to ratify or not, and they can explain all they want, but we either have to ratify or not ratify.
Well, that's, we're not going to ratify or not if we don't have it explained.
Did you say July 18th?
That has to be down before July 18th.
So you're going to be out of town, you said?
Right, I put all that out there, but I won't be available the week of the 11th.
Okay.
What if also, too, just, what if we all make phone calls to MTS and ask them, or even if he does a?
Well, I'll be glad to contact him for a meeting, but we just need to come together with the date, everybody can do this.
If, if we can come together.
Can we see about maybe next Tuesday?
Tuesday's the 6th, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, Tuesday, Thursday, you want?
How does that work for y'all?
Tuesday would be much more preferred for me.
Well, I'd like to interject, we can set a date all we want, but if MTS can't, we're, doesn't.
Yeah, exactly.
Should we wait and set a backup date?
I mean, I think we should.
MTS would have to.
We can get, if you can get in touch with MTS, American Rescue MTS tomorrow, then you can email and say they're available these days. When we come to a suitable agreement, what dates.
Do we have that along, just how many, how many are available next Tuesday, the 6th, or next Thursday, from Tuesday?
I'm going to, Mayor, I'm going to withdraw my motion and re-motion, okay? I motion that we have a special call meeting, date to be determined, based on MTS's availability, and that you contact MTS first thing tomorrow morning and find out when they can show up, and then email us dates, and we will get that public notice out there well in advance so that the ci, so citizens can show up as well. This shouldn't be also something where we just meet in a day, we need to, we need to make this available for citizens, this is a big, this is a big deal.
I'll second.
Can we repeat that call?
Motion to call, have a special call meeting based on MTS availability, TBD, where we can meet and vote upon our charter ratification resolution CR-20210610A-1.
So, just so I know, to help me when I call, I mean, are there dates, anyone is just absolutely not available, you said it's the?
Have to be next week.
Have to be next week. So would any day next week work for all of you?
We're, again, again.
Depends on whatnot.
Again, it's not up to us right now, we're going to find out with MTS, we're going to see what dates MTS has.
But it's like seven, if you're all not available, who they think they are. They would like a couple of alternatives, too, and again, this is pretty quick, if they can even get it together to do that. I'll call back tomorrow and ask them.
I would not be available on Wednesday next week, I think any other day would work.
Okay, so everyone else would be available either Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday?
I'll have to see.
Mayor, I have a pack counter, I just need to know what MTS can do.
Monday, I'm out of town, don't get in the lake.
Okay, well, let me get two dates he's available, and the most who are available for either one of those, we'll go back and talk about.
Yep, need to call over for that.
Okay. Is everybody's okay with that, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Yes, sir?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
That's, I just raised my hand. Okay, no.
Okay, all right.
I said I was opposed.
Okay, is there, can you help us out, is there a date that you're not available?
I'll have opposed to this and my motion altogether.
Oh, oh, okay.
Write them down as an opening.
I texted Todd, we're okay to have a meeting without him. So everybody knows.
Technically, we still have a few interesting questions, so.
Okay. Got you, all right, so I'll, they're back tomorrow. Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, we have, we, this is, Scotty, you can help us with this one, it's a resolution to move funds from one fund group to another. Could you help us understand that?
The general fund is different from the water sewer fund. Water sewer fund is what's called an enterprise fund, and what that means is it's for profit. So the water for the pool and the fieldhouse, we have to pay the water sewer fund for that. We're doing two years to catch that up, and we've already been doing it, once identified the issue, or Teresa identified it, and now we brought it to a decision. So these payments will get us square with what we're required to do.
Okay, we have two different years, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Can I have a motion just to accept all of these? Yes, sir, see?
Motion to approve agenda item, agenda item number eight.
Second.
Just, just the A one for A?
Eight, number eight, the whole thing.
All right, agenda nine, item number eight, and we have a second, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and we'll figure that out. Now we have the budget ordinance, Scott, do you want to, should we just vote on it, or is there any other explanation?
The only addition that I have is you approved the fire hall expansion, so we would have an increase of 200, actually, an increase of $157,000 to do the fire hall expansion, so that'll be on the budget amendment, or budget. expansion. So that'll be on the budget amendment, or budget ordinance. Okay? So that's an addition to what you have now, what you just approved through the fire hall expansion.
Hey, do I, do I have a motion to approve ordinance B dash 20210610 dash two? That's the adoption of our budget for this next year.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion?
Yes. Got lots of discussion. All right. What you all had asked me to do is go through the budget and find the money to make a tax decrease of 25, 50%. Where is the money? Where can we find the money? I hit about 27 different line items, which I can go through one by one. And then I've also got, actually, I got 28, but one of them I don't know if I get a vote on. The other ones were, I'm finding some monies from, what is it called? The local government rec grant, which is an unrestricted, where we could basically counterbalance our general fund. Because this has to be all general fund, because property taxes don't go towards anything, and that's water or sewer. So it's gotta go to the general fund. So I've found basically a total of $101,850 that we can cut that would be pretty easily done. It's just here and there, some of them are as low as a couple hundred bucks, some of them are as high as $19,000. It's just based on areas, you know, and expenses from before and future. Before I get into that, I want to point out a couple of things. One, we have been overcharging the taxpayers for three years. And I get that we are in a, in an area where, you know, we have some projects coming up. I'll probably be voting on a lot of these projects. We have to have money to spend on these projects. They are needed infrastructure projects. I'm not opposed to that. I think that we need it, you know, to update our infrastructure. However, we have still, regardless of things that we have coming up, we have still overcharged our taxpayers for at least three years by a million dollars a year. Okay? What I'm asking for is
Where'd you get that figure from?
That's gonna be your figure out John Poole's, his assessment that he did, where basically all of our projections came in at a one point, I think it was 1.2, 1.1, 1, and then it was more like 9.89 or something like that, right under. So what we projected in revenues and expenditures, that balance line right there, from what we brought in to what we spend, every single year hit over a million dollars. So that little black book, remember that little black book that John brought in for us? It's in there. And that's, that's the source of it that's going on there. So what we would be looking at in essence is add a 25% property tax decrease is $150,000. Let's divide $3 million by $150,000. All right. That's 20 times, that's, we've overcharged the taxpayers 20 times the amount of what it would be just to decrease them 25%, or 10 times the amount to decrease it 50%. And this is just for one year. Just based on that, I feel like we could do that and not touch this. And we'd be just, we'd be just fine. But the council had requested that I find other areas. So I can do that, too. So what I wanna, what I'm asking you is, because I don't want to waste anyone's time here. I'm not here to make a show. We all got stuff to do. But if you all would consider that first option, we can keep the budget as is and just decrease our revenue by 25%. I think that's a fair, I won't push for 50. But I've got up to 30% on what you all asked me to. And it's, it's just kind of, kind of to you. So that's where I'm in the discussion phase to want to ask you all your feelings, just open, you know, I don't know if we need to suspend the rules just to discuss, you know, very respectfully, kindly.
Can I ask, do you have something you can hand out to show us what you're talking about?
I don't have anything to hand out. I can, I've got my budget sheet that we can reference right here. And I've got the line items all right here, and I can point them all out to you. I've got 27 of them, though. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking if, if you all want to hear each 27, because that's what you did ask me before. But I am once again stating my case. I mean, right now, if we take out the, the $40,000 from the local government rec grant, that's a 7% tax decrease right there. That's 7% that we can decrease. That's 7% tax decrease. That's a good decrease right there, because that can be allocated out.
Are you talking about if we got a grant? Is that
We've got, we've got $40,580 from local government rec grant that is coming in next month. It's COVID, it's COVID related. Am I correct on that?
Yes, it can only be used for non-recurring expenses sometimes, though.
Exactly. So anything in our general fund that is a non-recurring expense, we can use that $40,000 for.
But that's only a one-time thing. It's not a continuing budget?
That is correct. That's a, that's a non-recurring expense. So when we have, basically what I'm saying is an offset. So let's say we have expense, non-recurring expense A pops up, and non-recurring expense A is $50,000. Well, $40,000 of dollars can go into it. And so that's $40,000 of tax revenue that we don't need to take from the people on that. And so that's 7%.
Can I say something?
Oh, go ahead. Absolutely.
That's just gonna be this year. Next year, we're gonna have the $40,000.
Yeah, we're voting on this year. That's exactly right.
But I'm saying, if we lower it 7% this year and raise it 7% next year, we I'm just asking.
Yeah. No, I got you. Are we afraid of looking bad or raising taxes next year?
May I ask?
Not ready to look at it either way.
Just a question. I'm trying to think, and I should know this as long as I've been on the council. How long since we have raised city taxes? I recall in the years that I've been on here that we've ever raised city taxes. So no matter what revenue is done, we have been very cautious not to raise. And we do have, in many, many years. I don't even recall how many years I've been on here now, but
And again, we, we've shown this, the numbers, our tax base here is one of the lowest in the state. It's not lower than Gordonsville or South Carthage, because they don't have the infrastructure to keep up. With the rest of the state, it is one of the lowest rates for the municipality.
Hunter County's one of the lowest rates in the state also.
Well, it's lower now. It wasn't as of a few days ago. But
Have you had a chance to address your thoughts to Scott? Have y'all, do you understand?
Chatted a little bit, very briefly.
Would you like to talk to this?
Well, just to present the facts as I understand them. The only reason that we have had excesses for the prior two fiscal years is because we have been unable to expend the money for the fire departments budgeted expenses. So that's something to think, to think about.
Yes, exactly. And that's, that's exactly what I agree, exactly. We, we haven't had the, we haven't spent the money. So if we don't spend the money, like if I go buy product day, and I go spend the money on it, and I don't get product day. So then I go buy product day B, and I don't spend the money on it. I don't get product B. I go buy product C three years in a row, don't get it. Maybe I'm gonna do a refund. I'm just putting it out there. That's, that's all I'm saying. Now, I'm not trying to, I mean, yes, I'd love to do a much higher tax. But again, I'm trying to, I'm trying to compromise with this council, is what I'm trying to do. I think, no, we haven't raised taxes in a while. That's a great thing. The county just lowered, or they just raised taxes significantly, but they just lowered it 25 cents. Is that correct, Steve?
Exactly.
25 cents. So that's a good thing. That's a positive thing. That works for our citizens. City of Mount Juliet just lowered theirs. And good Lord, they've got huge infrastructure. Mayor, if we want to compare infrastructure to infrastructure, go over to Sevier County and Gatlinburg. They got next to no property taxes over there. Huge infrastructure.
You're comparing apples to oranges.
Their tourism, their tourism money, their, all the money that's put in Mount Juliet. So, no, that's fine. Let's not compare now.
I do believe Mount Juliet also doubled the tax assessment, too. They lowered the rate, but they doubled the assessment, so.
That's another good point. Our tax assessments have gone up. So our projected tax revenues are gonna be a lot higher on proper taxes because they went up. So there's another, that's a whole study that we didn't even get. So we're gonna have that additional revenue coming in on our tax revenues, assessed revenues.
Yes.
You're exactly correct.
Well, let's compare, if Mount Juliet probably isn't
Let's just point out one, let's just point out one obvious thing. When we first bid out the fire hall, how much was it? 100 and 150. In a few months, it's gone up $125,000 because of building materials and stuff like that. Things are not going any cheaper.
Yep, and it's gone up, it was $150,000, $157,000 increase is what that fire hall came in. No, it's not, but there's, there's things coming down, too. Again, we're basing another, we're gonna make another decision based on speculation. And our speculation so far has been terrible, because our speculation has netted our city 1 point plus million dollars each year. Our speculation's not been hitting. So I do feel that the citizens of this town are better at spending their money than us. They just are. That's, it's their money. We have projects we want to do. I want to do them as well. We can amend budgets to do things. That's why we're here. We exist here to amend budgets. So it sounds to me right now that based on just those few smaller, the few, or not smaller, but broader facts that I'm giving you, and I'm just, I'm just asking kind of y'all's opinion, do you still feel that 25% property tax, based on just those, before I read all these off, you would vote on that as far as 25% property tax decrease?
There's one point that we did make early on in our discussions.
Well, Mayor, point of order, I did ask the council a question. If I could get that answer, and then you ask your question, that'd be great.
I'd like to bring some information.
Mayor, Mayor Smith, point of order. Point of order.
Well
Just point of order, Mayor Smith.
I'm not sure that we are discussing what we really have on our agenda to discuss right now.
We're discussing the budget. We absolutely are.
Well, the item is to, first, it's the second reading of our budget ordinance. We've had, what, four workshops to discuss the ordinance already?
Point of order, Mayor.
Excuse me. In one of those workshops, Derek
Point of order. I've got, I've asked a question, Mayor.
One second. Let us interject one more thing, and then come back right to you. But Derek, didn't you unless do some sort of study of, if we were to do all the roads, which would be property taxes in this city, how many millions were we talking about that we'd have to come up with? Quite a bit, wasn't it?
18 million.
Something like 18 million?
Yeah, it was 18 or 19 million.
So just, just keep that in mind, is all I'm saying.
Mayor, we've been through the song and dance for three budgets now, of all the things we could do with all this money. We don't do it. So what I'm just getting at is, again, I'd like to readdress my, my question to the council in a very respectful way. How do you feel, based on just the information I gave, not all this other stuff that you did ask me to get, which I will present to you, should you, should you not want to vote this way, but how do you feel about a $150,000 decrease in our revenue? $150,000 is what we're talking about in a decrease. How do y'all feel about that? And I'm just, I'm asking each and every one of you, just respectfully, how do you feel about it? Jesse?
Well, I think we have to see your figures to know if you're correct in what you're saying. If you've shown them to our, to our CFO, and he says your figures are correct, that's one thing. But you're, you're giving us numbers without anything to show in paper what you're talking about.
I, the last, the last
And you've entered, what, three or four budget workshops this
Yes, the last budget workshop, I did present these figures to the council in paper with a source on them. I did present these figures to the council. You can, you can change, you can change the momentum. I'm just trying to get a nice civil conversation that's publicly witnessed, seen, and everyone can understand, so that this isn't going over the heads of the people who are actually paying for this budget. So I'm just asking, and it's not, no pressure on anybody, but how do you feel about a 25% tax decrease?
I think you're asking us essentially to vote, and I don't think we should be asked to vote. You're asking us what our vote would be.
Yeah, I'm asking what your vote would be based on this. Because then I'm gonna go into this if, if not. I'm just trying to save some time, if possible.
We need to come back to what the item is on our agenda. And our item is the second reading of our budget ordinance. Now, if, if we want to create a whole different thing, but that's what our agenda item is right now. We either vote a second reading or we don't, you know?
Mayor Smith, revenue is part, revenue is part of the budget that we're voting upon. It's a huge deal. It's a huge part of our budget that we're voting upon. So we are talking about that. Are we, are we, are we in line with talking about the budget right now?
We already have. Numerous times.
And we, so what's the point of being here if we can't talk about it? Are we, are we silencing this?
We have talked about it. We've got a motion on the floor to approve it, and
A second.
Now we're in discussion about it.
So let's go back then to last meeting, where I was proposing these tax decreases. And you all had asked me, I think it was you.
It was two meetings ago.
No, it was last meeting.
Two meetings ago, you proposed it. You came back, last meeting, we said come up with some ideas.
Last meeting, you said come up with some ideas?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we had a timeline.
Okay, gotcha. Got the ideas. I'll read through them then.
Hold on before you do. We have gone through the budget line by line. We had your paper line by line. Is that the same stuff that you presented to us in the budget workshop?
No.
So you've got different
This is what you, this is what you council asked me to do.
Hold on, hold on. I just want to make sure we're covered. So this is different than that sheet that you presented us.
This is completely different.
You do not have that in writing other than your paper.
I have no writing other than this paper.
Then I'm gonna treat it like we treat everything else in this council. If it's not typed up and stuff, I'm not gonna entertain it.
Oh, okay. Hang on. If it's not typed up or something
Like the resolutions that are typed, that are not typed up, like that go on the computer?
The last thing you requested was that I share, you didn't say share in a typed format. It was a verbal format.
Apples and oranges.
No
Myself personally, I'm not gonna entertain
No fruits here.
Well, I'm not gonna entertain something that's written on a piece of paper.
Would anybody like to make a motion to this?
There's already a motion on the floor. Let's take it. We're in discussion.
Well, we've had, I mean, Robert Drew, we've had more than enough discussions.
We've had more than two minutes.
Yes.
Well, we haven't voted on two minutes, and we're in the middle of this motion right now. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go through this. And I'm not trying to waste anyone's time. I want to get your vote on this. But if, if we don't want to put in the time for this, why are we here?
Well, we had it in front of us in writing, comparing, showing us each line that you were gonna take it out of, where we could all look at it.
On top of that, we have put in a lot of time with the budget. At certain meetings and workshops. I mean, this isn't taken lightly by anybody in this room.
As have I put in a lot of time, per your request. You asked me to come and bring this to you all, and I'm bringing it to you all.
I don't think anybody's doubting that you put time in.
I'm not doubting you have put time in either. But you know what? One thing that needs to happen is the public needs to hear it as well. It's not just between us six. This is their money.
Has this been presented at any budget workshops that we had? You presented at any of these?
No, this was a request the council made of me, and to, to show where, if I remember the wording correctly, close to it, show us where we can find the $150,000, and we'll look at it. So that's what I've got right now. Now, if we're gonna not, we're not gonna do a tax cut based on a format, I mean, you want to talk about Washington politics? Good Lord.
Yes.
First of all, every time we come in here, you mention politics. Okay? You play more politics than anyone else does. That's the bottom line. So what we're gonna do, I'm gonna call it to order right now.
And we're calling to order, which brings us back to the motion on the floor. After we, we have a motion and second.
All right. I'd like to amend the motion.
It says motion.
What is your amendment?
Hey, you motion to approve.
You motion.
And Jesse said
It's your motion. But anybody can amend the motion.
Well, excuse me, let's back, hold on. The motion to approve the
Come to my back.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for to approve the budget, the second reading of the budget tonight. Are you amending that motion?
Yes, I'm amending it.
What is your
Amendment to make. Okay. I'd like to amend the motion to decrease. And if you all want to follow along with me.
Wait, wait, no, no. You've got to amend the motion that's on the floor. What is your amendment to the motion? It's to, the motion
Mayor, I'm in the middle of reading
Excuse me. The motion is to approve the second reading of our budget. So what is your amendment to that motion?
Mayor, if I can finish my amendment to the motion, you'll hear it. But you interrupted me in the middle of the amendment to the motion.
Please amend the motion.
If y'all like to pull your budgets out, I can show you where we're gonna amend it so that you can see what it is that you're voting upon. If you go into the general fund page four and five, under personal service expenditures, line item 4100-14800, under, that'd be training slash CPU.
Are you looking at the budget, or you're saying, are you looking at the ordinance budget?
I'm looking at the ordinance copy that I'm looking at the, uh, ordinance copy that we all voted, no?
This is, this is what we're voting on.
Mayor, can I, can I answer your question?
Certainly, is that what you're, oh, you need to try and amend.
Whenever you're ready for me to answer your question, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Is this what you're looking at? So, we're all on the same page what we're talking about. This is, this is the ordinance for our budget. So, agree with me.
Am I, am I okay to answer the question now?
Certainly, yes. I don't see what you're referring to. Go ahead.
Okay. This is what we all worked upon to make this budget. This is the paper right here. We looked at this. This is our, this is our bible to make the budget. We're voting upon tonight. This is the reference sheet I'm using. This is F Y two-zero-two-one dash two-zero-two-two, general fund budget proposal, first reading budget ordinance copy, Wednesday, June nine, twenty twenty-one. It's what we voted upon last month, okay? Is that sufficient reference?
Scott, is that the same thing we have these?
I think what the councilman is referring to is, the actual budget ordinance is in the format that we submit to the comptroller. I think what the councilman referring to is the worksheets.
Right.
That were used in the budget workshops to arrive at the.
Talking to you, you just don't.
So, this is the actual thing we're voting on tonight, is the budget ordinance that we send formally to the comptroller. We can't send a worksheet to someone.
I will use whatever increase this will.
All right, let me find it on this one then. I'm just gonna be popped up as a whole thread. This is, you've got, somewhere. Make a motion, we take five minutes break?
Let's take a five minute break.
Second.
All righty, all in favor?
All right, all in favor, five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I've been recessed.
Are you good with that?
That's fine, five minutes recessed.
Thank you. Sally, everybody. Thank you. Uh, okay, we've taken, um, recon meeting after our break here. Uh.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, we're still on, um, number, um.
Item, agenda nine.
Agenda item nine, the second reading of our budget ordinance. Yes, sir.
Coke, can you wrap this up in about three minutes?
I don't know if I'm doing three, but I think I could do it in less than ten.
No question.
Call for a question?
He called a question.
I'm sorry.
Well, you have to vote on.
Well, I guess, excuse me, excuse me, he's called for the question. This takes a two-thirds vote. The question, the call for the question is to stop, hold on just a second.
Point of order, point of order.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. When you call for the question, it's in debate, but it takes two-thirds vote of the council to do that. I have a, a call for question. Do I have a second to that? Okay, so, then we continue this discussion.
And first off, I'll, I'll apologize to the council. I apologize to get this in front of you. Um, I talked to Scott, and I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to hear me. Thank you for that. Even if you vote against it, thank you for hearing me. I thought Scott found a way to do this a little bit quicker than I am. Um, if you, I've got the details, but I'm, the, the details take time, Sam, so I'm gonna.
Is this your amendment to the ordinance?
Yes, that's correct. So, the first amendment would be to, um, I would amend to reduce the appropriations in the general fund for general government, um, and reduce that by nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, um, from three hundred, uh, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, it's gonna be under appropriations. Um, it'll be under appropriations, so it'll go from, um, three-five-one, three-five-four, and reducing that number by nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And if, if I get a second, and you all want the details of it, I can give you the details. It's up to you.
So, we have a motion to, to reduce our appropriations by nine thousand, what again?
Nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars under general government appropriations, which is a three percent decrease.
Do I hear that?
I'll second for discussion. Details?
Um, it would be two thousand dollars out of training, as, uh, we spent one thousand dollars last year, and we wouldn't need to increase it a thousand dollars. It'd be five hundred dollars out of postage, because we spent two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, basically, these are just comparing it to what we, what we spent. So, that way, we're, we got so much over, it's like, well, we've been spending this amount, so we don't need that in there.
Point of inquiry?
I was, you go.
Point of inquiry, I was gonna ask Scott if that's, is that appropriate?
Uh, on the training budget, the reason that we had that increased under general government is because, since I'm a CPA, I've already had forty hours every year, or eighty hours every two years of continuing professional educations, and we had to increase for that purpose. Uh, and it also, the CMFO training.
But we won't need that for this budget?
We will.
He's saying we will.
Every year we'll need.
Okay.
And we also didn't use the training appropriated for council and everyone to do, the training we have to do every year.
So, that one wouldn't work. Okay, so that one, that one, he's saying won't work. So, that's the next, so we're gonna take the two thousand off of that, okay? Um, five hundred dollars in postage.
Are we doing motion for each one of these?
No, this is the details during discussion, so, um, five hundred dollars for the postage on it. But we didn't spend the postage.
So, where do you get all the details? This is gonna be your motion in the entirety. Once we give the details.
Well, for example, I would resend my motion by two thousand dollars, because we just found out that they need that.
Okay, so the motion's for the one fifty.
Yeah, right now, it was nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, what's that, you're gonna go each, you're gonna do each line item for each motion, is what I'm getting?
Again, I, I don't, I don't want to, I'm.
Well, I'm just trying to see how, how we're voting. I mean, we're gonna vote on each one.
I just wanna know how to vote.
Entirely.
Scott, did you have something to talk?
Go, go ahead, Scott, you're fine.
Yeah. It might be easier if you, instead of doing a motion for each appropriation line item, if you just said, okay, I want to reduce general government by nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, city court by four hundred dollars, mayor by fifty dollars, and let that be one motion for the totality of your total decrease.
A motion to amend the budget.
That's just a suggestion.
Okay. I'm gonna take, okay, I'm gonna take Scott's, um, his, uh, his advice on that. I'm gonna motion this way. Again, I'm just trying to compromise with the council. Um, so I will motion, in one full motion, let me resend that amendment, and I'll motion to, um, reduce the general fund, uh, by three percent, which is a total of nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, city court by less than one percent, a total of four hundred dollars. Uh, uh, mayor's budget, um, by fifteen hundred dollars. And I'll slow, I'm sorry, I'll slow down if you guys, me too.
Can we, no, are you gonna be taking this on?
That will be, I'm just going off of his suggestion right now.
Okay.
Mayor Smith. Um, buildings, um, by fifteen, buildings and repairs by fif, I guess it's just under buildings, sorry, uh, by fifteen thousand dollars. Um, police by ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, fire by twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, street by twenty-eight thousand dollars, city park by nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of, do I need to slow down, or is it, okay, okay, for a total of one hundred one thousand eight hundred and fifty, uh, dollars, which would get us a seventeen percent property tax decrease to offset.
So, we have a, an amendment.
Amendment motion for a second.
Yes, yes, we have an amendment to our original motion, which was to.
Approve.
Approve this, so we have.
I don't think we tend to have a second, because I received.
We have to get a second first. So, do, do we have a second, excuse me, do we have a second to the amendment that Mr. Councilman Evil's made? All right, if we have no, if we have no second, then we will move on. Do you have other amendments, Mr. Evil, Councilman Evil?
No, um, yes, I have one more amendment, and I'll do this one. Um, I'd like to, I actually have two more minutes. Uh, I'd like to, uh, reduce our property tax by seven percent. Um, and that would be based on the forty thousand dollars from the local gov rent grant.
I'm sorry, is this an amendment to our second reading of?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to.
Where is that on this sheet for its property tax?
If you don't, Mayor Smith, is, is, I think this will go a lot faster.
I'll second it, I'll second it, so we can have discussion.
Thank you.
Can you, can you finish?
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to reduce our, um, revenue, um, forecast for property tax by seven percent to the tune of forty thousand dollars, um, which we would base it upon the, um, money that's coming in in a couple of months for the local govern rent grant. That would account for a seven percent property tax decrease. Second, for discussion.
The amendment is to reduce our revenue for property tax by, what did you say?
Seven percent with forty thousand dollars.
Seven percent.
Roughly seven percent.
Forty thousand dollars. Do I have your second for that?
We're ready to start.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're in the discussion phase now.
So, I've got a question. Is, Mr. Scott, are you familiar, did you guys talk about that, the forty thousand?
I gave the figures to, to Councilman Evil of forty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. His motion is based on his thought process of.
Uh, what that is, is, that's gonna be something that would be a one-time expense. So, like, if we had a one-time expense that we could use, if we could use that to offset, um, we could use that to offset the property tax.
I think I get it. I, I think my question is, this would be one time. We're not getting that forty thousand dollars every year, so we would be decreasing the budget by seven percent for one year.
That's correct.
That's it. That's what your, that's what your amendment is.
That, that's right, that's correct.
Yes, sir. Counselor?
Basically, what it is, we're getting forty thousand dollars COVID money.
I get it.
It's coming in. We can spend it at one time on anything that's not a reoccurring expense.
With stipulations.
Well, then, there'll be other stipulations in, in the money spent, just like the six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It'll be, all the stipulations will be there. We will not get that forty thousand dollars next year.
Right.
So, and I think with the improvements we're doing in our parts of stuff, it's gonna eat that forty thousand dollars up this year easily. Because we're already, we're talking about ball lights, new fencing, redoing the ballpark. That line, I don't think we have the money to take it out of that item. If we go away with the planes, we already planned the things.
Does that forty thousand hit those items that we're wanting?
I, I don't, I don't know exactly what the parameters are for that forty thousand dollars yet.
That's the other issue.
I mean, we don't have the money in the bank yet, and we don't have the parameters yet. It's a, we're not a reoccurring expense, so it could, it could not.
Basically, we're getting that parameter money, that's gonna be the forty thousand, roughly forty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Um, that's, that's a lot, it's got a lot less restrictive parameters. The other money, that's that six hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, that is much more restrictive. There's a lot of things, and that's, but the one thing that we felt, I think that it would go better for, you know, water sanitation, which isn't gonna really offset any property taxes, because that's in the water sewer fund. That makes sense. So, that's just kinda, I haven't, I haven't made any proposals with that, because I don't think we can.
I think, I think my only issue is, if we, if we do lower it seven percent this budget, and then we're raising it next year.
Well, with.
I just, that's my question to the person that has the motion on the floor.
Um, the answer to that would be, um, we would have that, it would stay, next year it would stay the same unless we motioned to raise property taxes seven percent.
Right, then, then we look terrible.
Now, Mayor, I gotta interject something here. If we change our property tax, that's a separate ordinance, all by itself, we have to vote on it. We can't.
That's not.
Well, no, we do. It's an ordinance to change. Anytime we change property tax, that's a law that has to change. The task has already told us that.
Point of order.
So, we can't coagulate these things.
Point of order. I asked this back from our city attorney Moore, back in February or March. I asked him, how is the, what's the appropriate way to change our property tax? So, this isn't my source, I'm gonna source city attorney Moore. He said, the way to do that is to present to the council, basically, no, he didn't say an ordinance. Oh, he did, he did say ordinance.
Yes, he did.
To present to the, but, to the, to the, to the, um, presented ordinance to the city council for that decrease, and the reasons, the reasons why. And he said, that he'll, so that's why we did the hundred, the, uh, twenty-five percent to the fifty percent, remember? So, that was the way we did it there. And then he said, after that's done, that's just to introduce it, so you start speaking about it, okay? So, that opens the discussion. Um, so.
I'm sorry, you, you presented a resolution, not an ordinance.
If, if you don't mind me finishing the question. So, then he said, we would vote upon it, from what I understand, we vote upon it at budget time, when we, when we , um, vote on our budget for the year. That is the way it was explained to me by the city attorney. I'm not an attorney. I'm going strictly off of what the city attorney Moore said.
So, so, and if that's correct, I'm just, I'm taking it face value, saying you're, you're right about it, just to have this conversation. So, it, it takes an ordinance to be presented to lower it. We've lowered it. So, now we come in next year, and here comes Councilman Peters, saying, here's an ordinance, I want to raise property taxes by seven percent.
That, that's correct.
Which, which I know you're, you're probably not gonna vote for, even though we don't have that amount of money.
What I'd like to do, though, as a council, is change our mentality from trying to find ways that we, um, increase property taxes to decrease, find that money elsewhere. The other thing is, what I'm pointing out is, like, it's, 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 like, it's not that I'm trying to reduce our revenue, which I do feel we are grossly, we have grossly over revenue right now. And I, I understand, we're in disagreement on that. So, that's fine. But what I, but let's say that we completely agree, that we want to get more revenue, and you're correct. I'm trying to offset property taxes to sales tax. And basically, a loss, it's, it's a loss leader in business, is what you're looking at. You're looking at a loss leader. Um, if I go and I say, hey, you want us to be here because of this, you want to shop here because of this, we have lower property taxes here. Uh, county just cut it, the city just cut it, this is a great place to move, bring your family, um, and come on out here, it's, it's, it's low taxes, it's family friendly, and people start spending money, and then our sales tax are going up. That's the objective that, that I'm looking at here. That, that's the, that's the full.
But that's also not a guarantee.
And that's, that's my point, that's what I.
Scott has something you want to, Scott, did you want to add something else, from your findings?
If the council would permit, I think I can help us come to some resolution.
Absolutely, yeah.
Everybody take out the, the ordinance that you have, that's got the multiple pages to it. If, and once again, I have no opinion, I'm just trying to give facts, so you make the decision. I think what Councilman Evil is saying under, on page one of, of the ordinance proposal, under local taxes, he's asking for a forty thousand three hundred and fifty dollar, or eight hundred and fifty dollar decrease to property taxes, which would be an adjustment to, if you look on the fifth page, section eight of the property tax, and the levy, the hundred dollars of assessed value, that's basically what you're asking the ordinance to be changed. This is the ordinance, you can change your property tax, the way I understand it, okay? This is an ordinance. But you have to change that in section eight, because this is an ordinance.
So much.
I don't have the figures to have, to do that. You have to get with other people a smarter than I am about that part of it.
Could we, I would love to check this out, because this is not what, in fact, legal is, I'm sorry, just about how you change your property tax. It has to be an ordinance that's put on in two different readings, and it may even have to be a public hearing. I'm not sure.
This is the ordinance we're, with, where you're, Mayor, you are exactly right, and we're voting on an ordinance.
Separate ordinance for property tax, not.
No, it, it doesn't have to be a separate ordinance. It's done right here. You're exactly right, except for.
We voted on it at least twice, and we'd have to vote on this.
We voted on it once.
No, we, we didn't vote on your. No, we didn't vote on your ordinance, we only voted on this once.
We're, we can amend, we're, we're not voting on my ordinance, this is an amendment to the ordinance. We can amend the ordinance and vote on it twice and amend the ordinance. That was the understanding that was given by City Attorney Moore and the entire council. We discussed it, if we wanted to make changes, we can make changes. I would still like to hear Scott's, what he was speaking about, though.
Well, Mayor goes a lot more about the ordinances and so forth than I do, and I'll defer to her, but I do know section eight is one place that this can be discussed, and I would defer to Attorney Moore and the mayor on that. But basically, what you're saying is, rather than $200,425, you would like that to be less by $40,850.
Correct.
So that, that is what you're saying that could be done, okay? That's what you're proposing.
Yes.
And it appeared to me, Mayor, is if we've, I don't think we got a second on reducing the appropriations for the general fund, it appeared to me that you're ready to make a decision, do you wanna reduce that $2,425,000 H1, H1, third column, of local taxes? Do you wanna reduce that by the $40,000? And then, I'll get with the attorney board to talk about how you plan on that.
Again, we're, our motion on the floor with these amendments is to approve on second reading the budget that we have here that you presented, she sent to the council. My understanding, and I would prefer we check with legal or table this, because I don't wanna be doing something that wouldn't, wouldn't be according to law, how we change our property tax. They have always told me that's a separate thing. The only reason that line is in there is because that's what this is indicating. Not that it's a vote on this, it's indicating the property tax. These are reflective of that property tax that we currently have at 1.25, or whatever it is in there. That's my understanding.
Point of inquiry.
Yes, sir.
Every year we get to this point, and every year there is a, we're not sure there's a procedural something, and then it never gets revisited, never gets asked about. And I, so what I did on the third year I tried to do this, is I went straight to the city attorney and got the exact way to do this. And you are correct, Mayor, that we have to vote on it in an ordinance, and you have to have two readings, you're correct on that. We are in the middle of the reading of the second ordinance, and we are amending that ordinance. That is the correct procedural way to do this, okay? Now, there is a motion in a second, if we wanna have more discussion in pertaining to the amount and why, I think we could do that. If we don't want to, we could probably go ahead and call it a vote, because I would like to get the vote out of this, but I feel like we're, we're tiring out the council, and I, I wanna get the vote on it, but I don't wanna like, make y'all upset about it. I, I want your vote, I really do want your vote on this. 7%, $40,000, guys, $40,000, that's it.
My only concern is, if we vote that way, and we found out we have violated how we're supposed to do this, I would almost rather table this again and get legal opinion before we do something like this.
We have until August, don't we? Isn't that what we were told?
We would probably have to have a, well, we're gonna have a special call meeting anyway, I guess we could do that for the second-
Can we do that? Can we figure out what was the right way to do it? Let's do it, not be pushed off for another two years, find out by the next time on a special call meeting, get it done, make a decision. I also wanna challenge you too, because it is one time, it is, it is a one-time deal for the 7%. Are you planning to continue to find ways to at least get that 7%? Because if you're not, then we've got to raise it back up. And I don't want the public to, to look at it as, I lowered it, you lowered it, somebody else raised it, because that's not right.
No, it's not right, you're exactly right. I, I agree with you 100%. We need to find a way to keep that 7% lower. And I, I agree with you, and I'll say it publicly, I'll find a way every year, make 7%. If I can find a way to make more, and you are willing to listen, in a very respectful, just, let's all come together, goodbye moment, let's do it, let's work together and do this. And I'd be happy to do it, but I guess what we would need to do is either rescind the motion, accept the budget, put it on for the next meeting. I'll type this all out, that way y'all can see this in case you wanted to look at it again. We can do this in a nice way. Again, I, I wanna get y'all's vote, I don't wanna fight with y'all here on this.
Okay, we make-
One possible solution is to approve the budget on second reading, and then if you want to have a different conversation, totally independent of property tax reduction, you do that at the next meeting or whatever, after you consulted legal, and then you can make a budget amendment. But this will allow us to move forward with our current year budget.
This can be amended at any time.
That's correct. Scott, and I, I see, I, I see why you're trying to do that, and I totally agree with you on why, but I'm, I'm basing my procedural off of what City Attorney Moore's, and the only reason I'm afraid to do that is because he had told me it has to be done at the budget when you decide the budget. And so that's the only reason I want to just hold off on it, you know? And this can, this will probably go a lot faster, now that, that we'll have all this in order, we can just roll through it. I, I see your sentiment there, but I, I don't wanna like, find out that later, like, oh, well, we, yeah, that we, we had to do it then, and then we found out-
I think we can amend the budget at any time during the year.
I, for what-
I agree with Scott.
You can, absolutely, you can amend the budget, I don't know if you can amend revenues, though, because I, I, that's, that was a question I had for City Attorney Moore.
We have to sometimes.
Do we not have to set the tax rate like the county does?
No.
I was kind of on believe, man.
We should have a lot more freedom in the city, we're not held to as much, the county's held to so much.
Just, so we are on the safe side with this, can we take some time to push this forward, check with our, with legal, which would be MTA at this point? They have all the answers to this, and maybe from Attorney Moore might have told you that, we got a different situation than MTA. But I do have one question. We're talking about almost a million dollars coming out very soon to do our, to our, do our roads. How would that, how, where would we get that money if we reduce this?
We're, we're, we're opening a whole nother subject here, so let's, let's, this is what I'm gonna ask Councilman Batcock, if he'd be willing to do, would you be willing to rescind your motion and, and table it to the special call meeting?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any further? Okay. We have an amendment and a second.
A motion and a second.
I'm sorry, a motion and a second.
It is an amendment.
It is.
There was a second only amendment. We need to vote on the amendment.
Can we go ahead and vote on that amendment, please, if there's no, no further discussion? We couldn't read it back, we're all on the same page about what we're talking about.
Councilman Evil, motion to reduce the general fund by $9,250 for the city-
No, no, no.
No, that's wrong.
That was the first one.
He rescinded that one.
Yeah, I rescinded that one.
It's by 7% and $40,000.
No, that one didn't really get rescinded, it was just, it didn't get, yeah, it didn't get voted in.
Okay. To amend the, to reduce the property tax by 7%, something on the-
Yes, that's the correct.
Based on the governmental, I'm not sure what, what-
Sorry, I'll read it off to you.
Local gov. not recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, were we doing a roll call vote or was that a-
This is just a vote on the amendment itself, so-
That's correct.
All in favor of the amendment, please, say aye, do a roll call, who's doing a roll call, all in favor, go ahead.
Councilwoman Canapple?
No.
Councilman Batcock?
No.
Councilman Evil?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
No.
Councilman Peggy?
No.
Vice Marys?
No.
Okay, so it fails for lack of a verdict. Now, we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion about the main motion, and that would be to approve on second reading the budget ordinance for the coming year.
My only discussion is, is that, right now? We, we can bring up, if we wanted to, to, to amend the budget, if we want to.
Later in the year, yes.
I mean, next month, if we wanted to, this month.
If, what I would recommend, I was gonna recommend this anyway, we approved the budget tonight, you'll take Scott's recommendation, we're having a special call meeting, we've got one item on that special call meeting, and it'll have two, we'll have plenty of time to sit down and work the figures and stuff like this, and we can talk, and we can do it, we're not pressed for time, we can actually put our thoughts and heads together on that.
Agreed.
But then we'll have our budget together, already there, then we can make an amendment.
So, you go ahead.
Set one thing to that, and, and maybe by then we would have the money in hand and know what it can be used for, and we could make a better decision.
And it would be new news to me, it's been very welcome news, if we can figure out that we could amend our revenues to bring in less property tax in the middle of the year. I don't feel we can. So I'm gonna make my last amendment motion, and then we can vote for it or against it, and then-
Wait a minute, we're in the middle of the discussion on the main motion, you better try to do this.
That would be the appropriate time to make one more amendment.
What is your amendment?
I'd like to amend the budget to reduce property taxes by 25%, as was voted upon the council, that Mr. Eze brought that before, so the 25% reduction of $100,000.
Can we clarify that? We voted to get the figures for the 25% reduction.
That's correct, yeah, voted to get the figures to see what it would be in that budget.
How, how would that, can you phrase that in such a way that it relates to the main motion, please?
He's amending the motion to reduce the property tax by 25 cents, or 25%.
But this, this is the budget.
Local taxes, yes.
So you're going to-
Column three, FY22, proposed, it says $2,425.
So we're taking a vote to lower our property taxes 25%?
He made an amendment for that, it has to get a second, then we take a second.
All right, we have an amendment, we do, we have a second to that, to lower our property taxes by 25%. All right, then, that fails for lack of a second, so we go back to the main motion here. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? All right, maybe take a roll call vote on the main motion, that is to pass on second reading our budget, as it stands.
Councilwoman Canapple?
Yes.
Councilman Batcock?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
No.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Peggy?
Yes.
Vice Marys?
Yes.
So the budget passes, thank you very much, we'll move on to the next one, which is second reading ordinance CCC, excuse me, CCO20210607-2, and that would be Councilman Peters presenting that on second reading. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve?
A second to approve on second reading, do you want to hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Pretty much, no, everyone's gonna vote, just wanna put it on the record that I feel that the way this happened, it was very much manipulated as the River City Ball is the one, the one organization that's been affected by this. They put in to be on the agenda in May, which they would have been approved for, and we would have been able to have this event. And respectfully, they said, we, or, or, they had it on the agenda for, not May, I'm sorry, for April, and the city asked them to put it on the agenda for May. No, no, I'm sorry, I was right the first time. City, they had put on the agenda for May, the city had asked them to put on the agenda for June, and they respectfully said, sure, absolutely. And then, the, then it was put on a special call meeting with not a lot of notice, that was the second thing that happened. Apparently, a lot of stuff happened in between, a bunch of support phone calls for a, and about 72 hours happened for this event to happen. Then, it was put on the agenda before, as the first-line item, Councilman Peters was put as the number-one item on the agenda, and the number-two item was the River City Ball. This was done, and not good, this is not done in good faith, and we should be doing things in good faith. It was done about as corrupt as I've ever seen it. There are also city and council members here who have requested funds and had no issue with the alcohol for their organization, and were denied twice.
No, sir, I was denied once, and since this ordinance has nothing to do with the River City Ball-
It has everything.
It has nothing to do with the River City Ball, it has to do with whether or not we allow alcohol on the streets.
Just making sure, you're saying once in public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got that on record. It was twice.
It's not that it matters, because this isn't about the River City Ball. This is about the ordinance as to whether or not the town of Carthage citizens want the liability of having alcohol on our streets. That's all it's about.
No, it's not.
It has nothing to do with that.
I am the one that brought up the ordinance, so, yeah, that's what I brought up.
And she should recuse herself, because it is a direct conflict of interest, a direct conflict of interest.
Your wife is on the board, you should recuse yourself too. Let's just, both of you just recuse yourself then, I mean, this is ridiculous.
No, it's a direct conflict of interest.
This is an ordinance about alcohol on these streets, it's not an ordinance about the River City Ball. You've made it about that, but it is not about that.
I've made about nothing.
Therefore, it could be any event, it could be any event. It has nothing to do with River City.
Not one-
I'm sorry that it affects it, but it has nothing to do with that.
I don't believe that you're sorry one bit.
Call the board.
Excuse me?
Call the board.
Yes, okay. This is-
We need a two-thirds vote, Mayor.
Well, are you asking with questions, what you're asking?
Call a question, or a question.
Yes, okay. It takes a second first.
Second.
Okay, it takes a two-thirds vote to call a question, which stops discussion, take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
This is to stop discussion. Okay, all right. Any opposed? Okay, we go to the vote now.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We go to the vote, so the vote here is on to pass on second reading ordinance in CCO20210607.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Sure.
Councilwoman Canapple?
And this, this is to pass the ordinance, correct?
This is to, to pass this ordinance.
Councilman Batcock?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
No.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Peggy?
No.
Vice Marys?
Yes.
So the ordinance passes, we're going to, thank you. And the next item is the Main Street corridor in here, it's five, you have something you wanna show us.
Yep, I'm gonna pass this out.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion while he's preparing, making a motion that we had to our special call meeting to discuss the possibilities of changing our property tax rate.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You good with this?
Thank you, sir.
All right, I promise to be quick. Did you look at sheet one? There's four sheets, sheet one starts at Main Street and 5th Avenue. We conducted a traffic study a couple of weeks ago. We've done it during peak times, your, your actual peak time wound up being between 11:30 and 11:45. You do these things every 15 minutes, taking in your peak, so, peak flow was during that time. It does not have school traffic, since this was not during school time, so this is our recommendations, there's many recommendations you can go, we'll, we'll discuss these four sheets, each intersection, tell you what we recommend, why we didn't recommend other things, and we can go from there. Like I said, I'm gonna try to be quick, but y'all asked us to do a study from 5th all the way down to 2nd, and that's why we conducted our studies. 5th Avenue does have a technical entrance or exit to the school, so we left, it is Fifth Avenue does have a technical entrance or exit to the school, so we left, uh, it is our, since we was not able to get a study during school time, we're recommending to leave it the same, except, uh, the way the crosswalks are done. And I'm gonna go back and explain all the crosswalks and, and around some things at the end, but basically leaving your turn lanes there, the light. Uh, go down to the next page, it's page two, it's gonna be at Ward Avenue. As you can see, the, I couldn't give you what's existing there, but the way that the crosswalks are aligned in, in y'all's town right now, they're just kinda running, I'm not gonna say anywhere they want to, but, but basically your crosswalks are running in the middle of another road. They're not running from sidewalk to sidewalk, that's, that's, uh, a clear violation. You don't wanna walk people into oncoming traffic just because of the crosswalk. Uh, you usually always try to give them an exit and an entrance onto a sidewalk, so the way that we've laid our sidewalks out, that's exactly what they'll be doing. So the crosswalk, the cross lane there is actually relocated at a better angle. Anywhere that you have to come on off the pavement has to be ADA accessible, uh, nothing y'all have, um, is ADA accessible at this point. So that'd be a violation, but we'll go into that. What we're doing here, though, is we're bringing traffic. You go, gotta go to sheet three to see what's happening, but basically, we're taking people out of the travel lane and moving them on to the, um, turning lane that's technically right now between Third Avenue and Ward. The traffic study shows that there's not enough left turns warranted on to Third Avenue going southbound, uh, to require a turning lane between Ward and Third Avenue. So you could do away with that turning lane and make a driving lane out of it to the north, creating a, and I don't have the dimensions on here, but you can see there's a pretty good gap between the, the northbound lane and the parking to your east, which is a conflict right now because cars are out in the middle of the travel lane, which people drive in the turning lane at this point. Uh, you can angle the parking, uh, instead of forty-five degrees, thirty degrees, that gives the people, uh, gives the drivers a better line of sight than the backing out to oncoming traffic. At a forty-five, you cannot see through your neighboring vehicles, uh, rear, if there are any types of vehicles or if they're tall. So that's just a little bit more safety factor there. If you go down to page three, this is your, y'all's major intersection, I would say, in, on Main Street, except maybe college or something for the school. Uh, it's a pretty busy intersection, as you can tell. I had to leave the turning lane in on the north, on the northbound lane, turning left on the third because during our traffic study, it, there was enough left turns to warrant a traffic lane only between Third and Second. There's a lot of left turns coming down to Third, um, going towards, um, I guess DT McCalls or the way you gotta go around the square. But there's, uh, during your peak time, there's about forty-eight vehicles an hour turning left. Uh, I've got those numbers, I'll go over them. Again, uh, make those thirty degrees, you, you can move traffic over, that's what the big arrows are showing. Uh, it takes some strapping to, to make things more safe. Uh, also, there was, and I'm sure y'all are aware, there is a pedestrian sidewalk and it was discussed, uh, I think at the last council meeting with me. There is a crosswalk between the two blocks. Uh, I'm not proposing that because it's, it is a, a safety hazard walking people out between, um, two in, in the middle of a street, between two blocks, unless it's highly needed. If there was, if you had a lot of pedestrian traffic, which we, during our study, we saw, saw zero pedestrians crossing that crosswalk.
Isn't this slanted one?
Uh, no, it's the one that don't show. It goes from the courthouse, you don't see it on here, but it goes between the courthouse and the law offices across the street.
The one in the middle?
Right in the middle. It's right in the middle. Um, if y'all are dead set on having, you can put Chevrons out on the road, you can put a, you'd have to put a, a blinking pedestrian light on to the courthouse property. You could not put it on to the right because of the cars, and usually you got it on both sides.
I think that one's obsolete because the lawyers aren't walking across the street.
We saw nothing, so we don't recommend putting it back, is what I'm getting at.
Cause there's no, no court over there anymore, so I think we can leave that one out. Worst case, they'll walk down and go across the.
Well, that's exactly, they got two blocks to go by next to one. We recommended not taking and putting that one in. Um, it's, it's high risk. Uh, if you look down on Third Avenue, we've rotated the parking spaces along the courthouse at a forty-five, and nice to give this right-hand lane turning on to Main Street, uh, more room for the vehicles, ninety degrees, they're actually out in the lane. Uh, sure, y'all live here and drive here every day, people come up, they share just about all of Third they want to, and then when they get ready to turn right, they jog over at the very last second. So the street's wide enough for, for a three lane there.
Does that, how many of the spots does that eliminate?
How many spots? I can get with you on that, I don't have a tally up. Uh, you're usually gonna lose one to two spots total.
So I'm going from the ninety to forty-five?
Yes. Uh, the reason, the only reason I left the other ones at ninety across the street is they, is my understanding with some of the, uh, tenants over there, that they use that as a truck dock for basically loading and unloading. If you turn off, if you turn those at a forty-five, which are really help miners as far as.
Number of spots?
Being able to back out, you, uh, your steps really makes you, there's two sets of steps, and when you start dropping those out, you lose a lot, you lose a lot of, a lot of spots there, so, um, that's the reason there's still the ninety. Uh, your crosswalks are going, as you can now tell, they're going from sidewalk to sidewalk. They're not coming into one another and making you walk into oncoming traffic. Um, I'm calling it East Third Avenue, I think that's what it's called. I did not show parallel, but parallel is parking there right now, there, I did not show the actual parallel spots there, but people parallel park on Third. Um, technically, there's not enough room for people parallel park on both sides and have two lanes. It's, it's tight, they're on the sidewalk. If they, if they wanna avoid traffic, they're actually parking on the sidewalk, so that's why I didn't show it, is you don't really have the space.
So are you suggesting that that comes out?
I would, at least one side, that gives them a little bit more room, so, um, it's just, it, I'm, you're talking feet, I mean, one foot. Maybe I saw you read the name, but.
One of those sides is a memorial, uh, is it not?
No, no, no.
For Mr. Bass?
Uh, oh, no, it's, it's just a, it's a parking spot, it's that, when he was alive, that the city, um, made for him, so.
It's almost like a memorial now, though.
It is, um, and the, the Legion's actually working on getting a different memorial, cause it's, it's such a conversation starter.
Yeah.
So, like, we like it. David said, you guys can take it down, I'm like, I ain't, I'm not.
I would much rather see the other side, if we're gonna take one out, be that one and leave that there.
Yeah, leave that one.
Well, yeah. Regardless, yeah, regardless.
At this point, I'm not suggesting take it out or leave it, I'm saying it's so close, I'm not.
But safety factor says take it out.
Uh, yes, because it gets so tight.
Uh, question, um, in front of the post office, you gotta have to have extra insurance if you pull out there.
Do what?
The, uh, parking there in front of the post office.
Yes.
Is there any kind of study done in there?
I'm getting there. That's the next page, I'm getting there.
Oh, okay.
I got, and this is the appropriate time to talk about it, I just figured we were on this page right here. Um, what I would say, if, if we were to go with this, cause I don't see, I didn't know if y'all did a parallel parking plan either, but if we were to go, like, we're looking at page three, and the top being Third Avenue East, the bottom being Third Avenue West, and the crosswalk on the, um, south side, that's, looks crazy diagonal right there.
Yes.
I would almost suggest that you just, um, take that out just because it's so, I mean, it's so out there, and you could move people to come up further up, but the only issue is there is also that turning lane. My suggestion on that turning lane is, um, you do have a high volume of turning there, a higher volume during those peak hours, but it's, it's mainly during the peak hours, but the same people who turn left there, when they leave, you wanna know where they turn right at? On page four. So they come in to go home there, but they leave on page four. So what I would say is, you take out your turning lane there and you keep it straight, but you keep your turning lane down here where you have more space, um, on page four, so that people can turn left if they're wanting to go that way. It's the same exact distance, but it's gonna clear out a lot more pedestrian-friendly area. Does, does that make sense to y'all?
Okay.
So like.
I know what he's saying. The only reason the left, the, the turning lane is in there, it warrants by the traffic.
Yeah, yeah, take this out, cause what, what.
They also use those for deliveries too, through, through Main Street for the.
Um, the one time I've seen deliveries was.
Truck traffic did come down.
Yeah, Tully would get deliveries and they'd park just straight in the middle of the street.
Candy Bar gets deliveries there too, in the.
Yeah, and they do it, but that's, they don't do the, they don't get their deliveries in, on, on there.
On Main Street?
Uh, not, no, they do it in the middle of the street right there, they don't do it on Main Street. I mean, they do it on Main Street, but they don't do it in front of the courthouse.
No, in front of the back, right, basically in front of the.
I've had like, Evil's had like one or two deliveries in four years on Main Street, that was a new driver, um, but what I'm saying.
Do.
Yeah, what, what I'm getting at here is, people come in, when they're coming home, they come in and they turn left right here. They turn left, they go down Third Avenue West. When they leave, coming up by the post office, they come out and they turn right. It's the same exact distance, so what I would propose, and, and again, we're, I wanna keep listening to what you're saying, but keep this turn lane here, it's your job.
Which page are you on?
On my page four, keep the turning lane next to the post office, and so people who wanna turn left, have a turn left there.
To go down to DT McCalls.
To go down to DT McCalls.
The question I would have with that is, if we really have any parking at our post office whatsoever, I mean, we got three or four parallel spots in the front.
And they're sketchy.
It would, it would. That's, that's very dangerous.
Well, do we.
In the middle of the road when you get out your vehicle.
Yeah.
You open your door.
In your door. We don't technically have it there right now.
That's what I'm saying, we don't have parking there.
You open your door to traffic.
You pull over to the side, you open the door, you're standing in light of traffic.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is.
I get, I agree with what you're saying, but we have to figure out something about the front of the post office too, if someone's gonna get killed there.
Could we not move the sidewalk in closer to the post office, maybe two feet or something like that?
If you all wanna talk about people getting killed in safety, I got another one right here that is way worse of a problem than the post office, and it's that line right next to the sidewalk. If people are walking down, and I'll reference Dr. Duke on this, they typically have a space not that close to the sidewalk, and so, and you have a lot of pedestrian traffic that goes up and down that sidewalk, if someone trips and falls, they don't have a buffer zone like they do.
There's no.
At the post office.
There's no two-foot margin.
There's no two-foot margin, yeah.
That's what I said, there's no two-foot.
Yeah, now, they have that buffer zone at the post office, if they trip and fall, they're good. Um, I don't hold my little girl's hand as, near the post office, but up there, I hold my little girl's hand. Um, so right, right here, this is, that's a buffer zone, so if we were able to move that over somewhat, uh, get rid of that turning lane, we'd have more of that buffer zone on the sidewalk. It, it's a suggestion, um.
You're talking about pinching in closer, that way the traffic's more towards the center.
Yes, move that, move that center line out more.
We can actually move both of them and get the people further away from the cars on the right too, cause we take out that turning lane, we got that room to move off directions.
Yeah, and that's the thing, it's like, yeah, and, and it's slow enough down that people can just kinda.
Right, if we take this out.
You're exactly right.
You gotta bust the bolt on.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
Of course, I can't see where.
You couldn't see what's saying.
He's just saying, take the turning lane in front, dude, that's from it.
I'll show you two and then I'll show them. He's saying, take this turning lane out, move this lane a little bit down, and then move this lane a little bit up.
In front of the courthouse.
You got more of a buffer here, you got more of a buffer here.
And take this out.
You, you wait, or. But, that's basically what he's saying.
What would you say about the turning lane?
Traffic over. The, the traffic study, that's the only turn that is warranted by traffic.
Really?
Which, which one now?
The.
In front of the courthouse?
The left turn in front of the courthouse.
And how many, how many cars?
Fourteen cars an hour. They're trying to turn left while you got four-hundred coming at you.
Yeah.
So the problem is you got four-hundred coming.
You're waiting.
This guy here is gonna have to wait, so it's going back, all these people up to Green Bridge, yeah, when you got four-hundred coming. That's why, that's why it warrants it, I'm just saying.
Would a traffic arrow still there to help that?
A traffic arrow there still help that, no, because you're now taking the turning lane out.
Well, I mean, all the lights, just a light, this has a green left arrow to give them the right way.
I mean, you could re, you could reconfigure your light to work. Southbound has a, has to turn right at a point if somebody's waiting too long to turn left.
But you can also, you, 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 that problem exactly, you can alleviate that problem on second.
Second, I don't have no light now.
There's no light, but you alleviate the left turn, and there is a light on Third, so it's gonna stop traffic and go traffic, stop traffic, go traffic. So there'll be plenty of time, and it doesn't have to have a light, cause it's a turning lane, and so they can keep going forward, they can go back, light'll stop, they can turn left there, and then you've opened it up and made it a lot more safe for pedestrians. And like you were saying, move it up a little bit on one side, move it up on the other. It's also gonna line your streets up a little bit better so that they, we don't have this zigzag line, it'll straighten it out. I don't think you can line up our east-west streets, that's almost near impossible.
No, it's just, the reason I didn't suggest that is just cause it, by traffic study, it doesn't warrant it, so.
Yeah.
It's.
From my understanding.
Cause if, if, if I was to take, do that and you done it, and then it starts backing up, I know who's gonna get his phone call.
Well, also too, did you get a traffic study on who's turning right here on Second?
Yes, we got, we, we said it, Second, Third, and Fifth.
You didn't see him sitting out there?
I mean. But I don't look anymore.
Yeah, yeah, we got all the intersections took care of, and I got the, I got the candles.
How many people were turning right during the, uh, during the morning hours?
On Third?
On Third. No, on Se, I'm sorry, on Third, on Second.
I didn't break Second with them. Third was the highest, uh, right turns on Third was eight.
But during the mor, because you're gonna have more, you're gonna have tired traffic turning right in the morning, and you're gonna have higher traffic turning left in the evening.
Correct.
Yeah.
So how many left turns again? Do you have a third, that's Third heading north and you're turning left on?
On Main Street, turning left, it was forty-eight.
So that's.
Turning left.
When, no, on, on Main Street.
Okay.
Going north, turning on Third toward Rohan's or.
Was forty-eight.
Yeah, it was forty-eight, that's it, cars an hour, and you had four-hundred and twelve, I don't tell you wrong. Yeah, you had four-hundred and twelve coming at you.
Okay.
Four-hundred and twelve cars an hour coming at you, you had forty-eight people trying to turn left.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying if we take that turning lane out, then they're gonna be backed up because there will no, they'll all be waiting, waiting behind that left-turning person.
Or they're gonna start turning, what I would do is I'd start turning by the post office, I wouldn't be going down there waiting.
Yeah, because they're, what, you just. That's what I'm saying, is they're already turning right there anyways.
They'll start turning left.
It's like a tradition, I don't know what it is, but I watch them do it all the time. They always turn left on Third, and they always turn right on.
If you're going to DT McCalls, you're going down, turning, so you can get in those parking spots. This way, you have to go down.
And go around.
Around, and then hit that and to get those same.
They don't go down Third and turn right because they see the stoplight, they don't wanna get backed up behind it, so they go over the path of least resistance and they always go.
They're gonna just go back.
I gotta base it on the, on the facts that, that we got, so, um, alright, so let's, I think that's cut Third to, the Third Sheet. So let's go to the Fourth Sheet. Um, this is by the post office. Um, I did not put the parallel parking in here either, but it is there, and it is, as y'all did note, Main Street in front of the post office is tight, but, uh, Second Avenue on the, um, south side, there's plenty of room you can park, parallel there.
So you're saying move the parking from the front to the side?
Yes, there's all kinds of space there, as you can tell, um.
And there's a lot of parking here, Steve.
Yeah, that's, that's. And then we also turn those spaces.
I just still, I think people, they automatically.
They had a parking, yes.
But you also gotta keep in mind, if you're moving the parking over to there, that a lot of the elderly people have a walk block further.
Yeah.
Right, as I think moving the sidewalk closer to the.
Oh, you could, I, I didn't move sidewalks in my study, but yes, you're correct, if you could, um.
Is there.
I'm not sure which of those right of ways is there, but it's, if it shows, then you can redo that and get, you don't leave much space.
We kinda got a mixture between parallel parking and thirty degrees and forty-five degrees currently, like, all over the city, and it's, there's, um, that's, that's what I was gonna check on next, is did, did you do a parallel parking study as well?
A parallel, a parallel is impossible with four-hundred cars coming at you, because to get in a parallel, you gotta stop in oncoming traffic and back in, does that make? As far as Main Street, Main Street does not fit for parallel.
It's more of a.
Because you're stopping and this guy behind you's gotta know, hey, he is actually trying to get in this parking spot and back.
It's too late for him to back up if somebody's.
And if you do, knows in, and this guy runs back in, you know, it's just, it don't.
Well, that's, and, and.
Parallel works great where you got very low volume, very low speed and.
No, I agree with you, the same, the same thing though too, is when you're backing out of those parking spaces, you have the same problem. Whether you're, whether you're backing in this way, or you're backing in this way, you're still, we're still backing.
Yes, correct.
But we're not stopping the whole flow of traffic.
You are stopping the flow of traffic if you.
But I'm talking about in the middle of the.
Not if you yield the right of way.
Exactly, you wait for the light to change.
You wait for people to not be there.
You wait for the light to change, it changes, I, I go there, I park back out all the time, I have a problem.
That's what you gotta do, you're just sitting there waiting to make out instead.
I think slanting after the Third. I think slanting at the thirty degrees.
It helps a lot. Fifteen degrees helps, helps your eyes see more.
And then taking the turn lane out will help that give more distance too.
It does. You need distance, is what you need.
And I'm okay with it being different all over the city. If it's, if it's thirty where it's appropriate, forty-five where it's appropriate, and parallel where it's appropriate versus. Having, we don't want to say.
Get rid of the parallel parking in front of the.
Post office.
The post office.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying it's just so close to not being safe. I'm not going to say. The, I just didn't get it plotted on here in time for this south. The south side of Second Avenue.
Our best case there is we'll be looking at moving that sidewalk.
Yeah. You can move it a couple, think, you need eight foot six inches is what you need, if you want to know. Eight foot six for a parallel.
So I've got, I've got another question.
But your, which of y'all zoning code requires nine feet. So everything I've done is nine foot, so even parallel would need to be nine foot.
Now, like, take the, if we look on the southeast side on page four.
That corner.
Right there, the old video store.
Yes.
It kind of just, it's a street that runs straight into like a public parking lot.
Yes.
Are, are you planning on like curb, any kind of curbing there, anything like that?
I just showed you a striped line up.
Just a ride to do it.
And as you notice, right now, you have, you have pedestrian walkways over there, but this plan does not show pedestrians going across Second on that side, or across Main, because when you put a walkway in, it usually goes to a sidewalk. It don't go to.
It don't go to any.
So that's why, that is not, that's why that is not, I stripped that away. Because they can go, they can get there, but really, there's nowhere for them to go when there's a parking lot. Which is oncoming traffic, so.
Question again about in front of the post office.
Okay.
You've got parallel parking there in front of the post office. Many times when I've gone to the post office, the traffic going north, stopping there on the side of the road, in that parking lot, whatever. At the video store, whatever's there, and they're walking across the street to the post office.
Okay.
Is there any, was there anything studied done on that? Because.
We didn't.
Anybody going north, they're stopping there on the side of the road.
Correct.
And crossing across, you go to the post office.
All day long, every day.
Yeah.
There in our study, nobody walked. That, let me double check, because I don't have notes in front of me.
I don't know how they're parking there. I think they're in that parking lot a lot of times.
They just pull right into that parking lot.
Yeah. Which that's going to be a store.
Well, that's going to be opening a new business there.
Yeah.
There's already one, I think it's just open or in the process. I saw a sign of.
Yeah, because they were paving it or doing some patchwork.
Yeah, so someone just bought.
And to that note, we used to park in where the store is now, where the market.
Service station thing.
Yeah. We used to park in there, but then they made their drive-through, so there was no parking.
I think people still sneak and park in there though.
I do.
There's not, there's not much where you can, though. You can off, you're almost going to block.
There's not three parallel parking spaces?
It's, they're not, they're not. The thing is, they're not wide enough to be a. It's not, it's not really, that's the thing is, they're actually not parallel parking spaces. It's just a big, blank space where people park.
Because once you park there, you open your door, you're already.
Yeah, I parked there too, but it's really scary to get in your car, to come around and get your.
Yeah, you got to wait till everybody goes by.
Yeah, you better. I think, I think we're back to the possibility of moving that sidewalk. How many feet do we need, did you say? Nine feet? How many feet do we have?
I don't have, in front of me or a scale, I'm going to say you've got about eight feet right there.
So it'd take about a foot sidewalk.
Yep.
I think that's the most feasible thing to do.
Why sidewalk in towards the post office, so you move this.
To make things safe.
Yeah.
Safer.
Maybe.
Well, we, we don't have to go right to the minimum, we can see what it looks like.
See, you've got plenty of room.
Yeah.
If you can work with the federal government on that. I was going to say, I don't know what your right of way is, so.
I think it's probably the owner building.
It's probably. They just ran it.
Okay. Well, then, again, either if you don't have the property, get easements, if you, if you have right of way, right to nothing.
I think that's going to be the best bet.
Can we ask them for a, can we ask them for a variance just in that, that area? To take it from nine foot to eight foot four?
Well, I would rather have the bigger spot.
The more cushion with nine.
Yeah, with nine, and then go to the very minimum, because if someone opens the door, steps outside, it's, it's six inches, and we get somebody killed, it's like.
It's a lot of elderly that are pulling, that are pulling up there too.
You notice most of the people that do park in front are, are your elderly people.
I'm also. Even with moving the sidewalk open.
I'm with you.
You've got that extra space too.
That's why I move it over, that way, we move everything out of the way of traffic.
Yeah.
Further away.
If you move it over there, it's a bank there.
No, I would, I would say again too, like, I mean, I'm not as concerned here, because I see that happen. I, I see a lot more foot traffic, people moving across, walking across on that courthouse. And we're, and especially, you know, we are trying to make this more kid-friendly, more family-friendly. The more space we can get between the road and that sidewalk and the courthouse, I think would behoove us. Also, in all seriousness, and it'd also align up our Main Street more, and then, I don't think that we need this crazy diagonal one, one crosswalk there. We could, everyone could cross right there.
Yeah, you can make, you can go in another motion there, so.
Yeah, and then, then, then it just, it looks, it's more aesthetically appealing, it's safer, and, and all we're doing is diverting that turning lane back to second. And, you know, and the people will do it. It, it'd take like any traffic pattern, takes a couple of months to get used to, but they'll do it all day long.
All right, now y'all ready for my recommendations? I went through all that, now this is our recommendation from our study. Address non-compliant ADA parking spaces.
Absolutely.
No parking spaces that is labeled ADA right now is truly ADA compliant. You've got to have two percent every which way. The ones that are striped are greater than that. At this point, there's really no way asphalt-wise to make those. My suggestion is to not, if they are truly, the town of Carthage is, I would not put those back as ADA spaces. If it's, if it is tenants, then it's, the liability should be on, on them.
Can you say it one more time, what part you're talking about?
The actual ADA parking spaces are.
You say do away with them?
I'm saying do not strip them back, yes. It's a liability. If you say it's ADA and it's not, then the liability is on.
Where do we put our ADA spaces?
You're going to find somewhere that's flat enough to put them.
You mean, you're going to have to do that? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, what I'm saying is where they are now.
Other words, they can't be where they are now, we need to find a better spot for them.
Correct.
Well, there's not even cutouts in the sidewalk.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Wouldn't it make more sense to make them ADA compliant?
Some places you might get lucky and get them, most of the places are sloping so excessively, you couldn't even build asphalt up enough to make them.
So Main Street really doesn't.
You've got one at the courthouse that got real close. It's the one that's actually at Third and Main at that intersection.
The closest one?
The one closest. Now, the one over there across the street, I think, is there a law office in that corner?
You're talking about across the street?
Across Third, across the courthouse.
Third, Third West North?
Yes.
Uh, that's not a law? Yeah, that one, that, that'd be Matt Watson's.
Well, that one is pretty, pretty good slope. I mean, it's, it's a big one, it's a van parking, but it's, it's greater than the two percent. And the ones that are actually going on Main Street that's striped are, they're sloped so much downhill towards the towards the sidewalk that they're not, you couldn't get those.
Are we required, I'm sorry, Jesse, go ahead.
The only thing I was going to say is, if, if they're not appropriate where they are, can we not look at different spaces further up that aren't as sloped? I don't think we should get rid of our ADA.
Yeah, I mean, if you can find somewhere, yes, if you can find somewhere, then yes.
But did, did you see any place, or could you?
That wasn't part of, our study was, that did a lot of problems.
I understand.
Come up with new ones, so.
I think we need to each take one of these with us and get out there and look at them, and study, I think we'll understand a little bit better.
I'm pretty sure that's what's happening today.
But you've got non-compliant spaces.
We had a good time, baby.
Yeah. And, let me add, can I ask one? Are we required to have a certain amount of ADA parking spaces?
You are not required.
We're not required to have.
Now, somebody puts a business in, is required to have ADA parking spaces, usually by, by y'all zoning code. But those businesses do not own the street.
Yes.
See, it's, it's for the.
We want to have ADA compliant spaces.
But if you don't, if you can't make one ADA, you don't want to say that the business not.
Yeah, so that's why I'm wondering, like, we don't want to burn ourselves up to liability either.
Absolutely. That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, don't put them back.
Yeah.
If they're not compliant.
We, we need to find.
Yes.
ADA spaces. We need to take these with us, go look around, identify, and maybe have, you know, maybe you could look for, we, we didn't give him the scope to go find ADA spaces. So he didn't bring us the scope.
What I would, what I'd recommend is take his recommendation, take the ones out that do not meet the compliance, because we're not required to have them, and then do a study to where we can put some in that actually meet the standard.
Yes.
One of the things Gainsborough, Gainsborough did, of course, Gainsborough's completely on the hill, is they inset a concrete area into the courthouse yard that could be leveled, and that's where they have the parking places. And true, if we did it on the side of the courthouse, that's kind of a long way from the businesses, but at least we have some.
That would be probably the one place we could, to be honest with you.
On both sides?
But you'd have, yeah, so, and you could level out just a certain section, you know, like, and, and closest to Main Street, level out, let's say, six or seven ADA spaces, and then cut it down, and it'd just be a drop in the wall. We'd lose a parking space for it. We're probably going to lose a few because they're ADA. But we would have them. But that would be a third avenue.
I would say we don't need six, I'd say maybe two on each side.
I don't think we'd be really losing any, because if we're taking them all out of Main Street and just saying, here's two or three.
You're going to gain, you're going to gain.
You're gaining, so, yeah, you're right. We, we'd lose one just in a, just in creating a wall for the width.
There's an ADA space by the library, have you checked that out?
That's off slope.
It's not.
He didn't, that's not in the scope, because he didn't, you didn't check Third.
Yeah, was that Third, Third and Main?
Yeah.
There's two there.
But you didn't check down in front of the library, which is.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
All right, so you don't have, I'm saying replace existing sidewalk crosswalk ramps. So where the crosswalk turn that we proposed, you need to put ADA compliant ramps in at, where they end up in sidewalks. The biggest recommendation we have is to modify the traffic signal at Main Street and Third Avenue, and Main Street and Fifth Avenue to have traffic loop detectors on the side streets. Right now, the majority of the time is timed, and they're stopping flow on Main Street for no reason. There's nobody sitting here ready to go, but yet you've got your main flow of traffic stopped.
It's, it is, it's like a, it's like a conversation with Morpheus, like, all right, go now. You can know that you can cross the, you can cross the road and hit every light and not get hit, you know, you're going to go, but that's, that's exactly right, that's.
That's a recommendation we have. Of course, restriping plan, you've pretty much seen ours, but we can redo it to modify what y'all like, and remove the turning lane to twenty more to Avenue and Third Avenue. Make it a, make it a northbound.
That's another question for you. So what was it, less than a year ago, we just got the yellow stripes on there? And those things look like they've been worn out for.
We usually do, we usually do white.
No, the, the, what they are is technically, they're not technically crosswalks, they're called, what are they called, loading zones?
There's no crosswalk there, they're just straight lines.
Well, that's straight lines. I'm talking about the ones that are the yellow.
The ones.
Loading zones that are supposed to be crosswalks.
Yeah, that's not the right color. Well, the, the yellow that y'all got now is a crosswalk, or the ten lines you've got is a crosswalk. It is compliant as far as.
I'm talking about the yellow ones. So like, we just got that, we just got those restripped. We just spent like thousands of dollars to restrip it, and it looks like it was restripped like twenty years ago already. Is there a particular, like, before we go spend all this money on restriping, is there a higher quality stripe we can use?
Thermal, thermal plastic.
Okay.
And that's going to be reflective things, right?
It's more expensive, but it lasts. And, and it's got that glass beat, so.
And then I guess one more question. Somebody else is pushing on.
And I do want to tell you, the crosswalks that you're seeing on our plan, that, that is for high-speed, high visibility. Y'all don't have high speed, but with the conditions that y'all've got, it is our recommendation to use those type of crosswalks. It lets the driver see it a lot, a lot better than the two or three lines.
I agree, and then.
You know those signs that, that come out of the street, they're like, you can hit them and they'll bounce back up? That says yield to pedestrians? What is your recommendation on that?
The only time you use them is like that when it's in the middle of the courthouse.
Okay.
That's what I was going to ask you about. Are we keeping that crosswalk?
No, I'm saying do not put that.
Yeah, yeah, that's just asking you to walk out in traffic.
We're like, I think Carthage has spoken sometimes, is we do not yield to pedestrians. So like, something that would help yield to pedestrians would be.
But this does have to go to planning.
It started here.
Yeah. Well, I, I think Sam's idea, I like Sam's idea, we take this, we all, we all look at it, bring it out, and then listen.
And I would say.
I will say, if we do make a workshop to look at it, that we should all be there, not just three of us standing in the rain.
It was raining. My apologies.
It don't matter.
I saw it.
You ain't no melt, I trust you.
Do we have a motion to, to address it at the next meeting?
Motion to address at the next meeting?
Second.
I try to be quick, guys.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Y'all in favor?
Ah.
All opposed?
Lights in the ballpark.
Okay, the next item is. We put out a bid. And in the paper, Mr. even puts out to some professional groups in here, Mr. Kevin.
What?
The ballpark. What we, what we did is just a basic.
Dodge.
What was the wording again? Let me have it in the paper. We didn't have an engineer to give us the full scopes, and we just put in lights for a.
Something to be specifications for.
Sixty-foot poles to be specifications for Little League baseball field, yes, looking along the lines.
Okay, and we didn't have any response from anyone?
All right, well, motion, we put it back, give us a bid.
Second.
Okay.
Didn't get a bid for lights?
We did not.
At the ball field. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Who opposed? So we'll try that again, on the bid. I, I thought one thing we were hearing from people was, could you give us the scope of this, because we don't have the scope. That required an engineer to, to do the scope, so.
I did get asked questions about it.
Can we?
Okay.
Pointed the.
Go ahead, sorry.
On the scope, I mean, wouldn't the per people who are professionals hanging up the lights, wouldn't they give us a, a scope? Because like, I want, I want this to happen, but also I don't want to get a number, and then we just vote on a number. I like to see what the lights are, what the scope is, things like that. So, and I think that they would do that for us.
Most people that, I would think, install those lights have installed them on Little League baseball fields before.
There's a lot of Little League baseball fields, aren't there?
Yes, so I would say there should be some.
If we're not.
To do a tally.
Yes, we did.
I think we should.
Evan, could you help us out a little bit with that lighting?
The ballpark lights.
Do we have, I mean, do we need to give these folks a scope or spec or something so they know what they're bidding on, or how would that work?
The, the way y'all are going to approach it would be a design build. So instead of having someone design it up front, you'd want them to include that in their bid. So your question for proposals would be to design and install the ballpark lights and cords with Little League standard, standard lighting, or Little League lighting standards, I think.
Steve, why don't you just write the, write the, write it, just write it, just write it, how you think you believe they do, and that what they do.
What I'll do is I'll go, I'll go to the county, because they just had their place, and I'll see what company did that, and I'll get there. So I get.
Just send it to me and I'll put it out.
I mean, you put it out the way, I mean, it sounded good, but I want to.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm doing whatever.
But I think that's.
Making this more complicated than it is.
So I think what we were missing in our part is the design part, because we do need to have someone to design it to come out, so that's what we need to.
I guess there was a miss in the translation. People that install lights on ball, ball field parks know what the regulations are, how high they're supposed to be, and they know that they do it on time. I was assuming that we would contact someone that.
Well, one of the people contacted us, he's a lighting person, he said, I need, I need to know what your scope and spec or whatever.
They did it out all the time before.
Yes, he said he had, so I don't.
A lot of times they have specifications.
Well, see, and now we're going to have him designing, so then that'd be the.
Yeah, I think that would be the difference.
The designer will let him come in and look at it and say, this is what I suggest for your area. Like your own, like his own little engineer.
What, what I think what we're saying is we want whatever company's going to do it, we want to see what they would. We want to see, we want them to present us with options of how to do it. I don't know anything about ball field lights. I need to see what they.
So you have to bid it out, that's all we're saying, we can't just say this stuff because, so to bid something.
I think we got the word perfect now, I think we'll be good.
I think we're good, right. Can we take a vote on that?
Yeah, we are.
Let's take a vote.
We did.
We did, we did.
Motion to.
We're second on that.
Yeah, we voted.
Okay.
So our next item, I think, finally, Sally?
I would like, uh, just go ahead and make a motion to approve this order to schedule as you proposed to the council.
I'll second that.
Approve a second, I don't want to have any discussion.
Do you mind if I take a quick second just to read it? I appreciate it. Oh, this is just for 2021?
Yes, yes.
Now, okay, so we're not going to, yeah, because.
This year started first.
We, we're so.
All right, I'm good, I'm good. All right, I have more questions.
All right, any further discussion?
Okay, all, yes. One question, I think I talked to Ms. Sally, uh, last night or whenever it was, um, excuse me, uh, about extending one day, like for seniors or adult swim, only like a Monday or Wednesday or Friday, uh, going from like nine to ten, or to, to eleven, just one time a week. And you would rotate that out, uh, with your lifeguards or whatever. That would give, you know, a lot of people don't want to go for just one hour. I wouldn't, so, uh, a couple hours, just one time a week, is all I'm asking.
Let me ask you this. What I'm anticipating doing is that five dollars that they're going to pay to come, they can stay all day. They don't have to leave at eleven o'clock.
The point that they're coming, an adult would come, would be away from the kids that come at eleven o'clock.
Well, most of the kids don't get there till twelve, twelve-thirty, because they've got football practice from nine to eleven, or whatever, but, uh.
Could we try it one more day, just to see how?
I'm just saying one time.
Maybe.
One day a week.
I will add, probably I will do.
I like to amend my motion to include from nine to eleven on one day a week in a rotating fashion. For adult, for adult, adult swim per lifeguard availability. Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, that was amendment to your, to your motion.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion, the amendment is.
I will look at, let's go back to the main. Probably what I will do is probably, I will make it on Friday, and I'll tell you why. Because most of the time we have a pool party on Friday night.
Okay, we got it, we got one more vote, Sally.
No more.
Okay, on the main motion, any further discussion on the main motion to approve Sally's schedule? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, one more.
Probably did an amendment.
Retired persons.
Two completely different shifts of lifeguards that guy. You know, one come in, work nine to two, and another come in.
I've got a suggestion that, uh, people that work for the city for thirty years and above, I think we owe them something. I mean, they've dedicated a lot of their life to this city. I think if we can afford to pay their insurance after they retire to the age of sixty-five, not to eternity, but to the age of sixty-five when they qualify for Medicaid or Medicare, I think that'd be an additional benefit to someone that's served the city for this long.
Scott, did you run any numbers on that, which answer?
Right now, we would have, depending on the eligibility criteria that's established, we would have potential of three persons right now. Within the next six years, we might have four. You're looking at, uh, anywhere from thirty-two to forty thousand a year in order to provide a hundred percent of that, but you could decide anything less than a hundred percent, whatever you wanted to do, so.
Now, does that figure go to a COBRA rate or the same rate that they're employed?
They have the same insurance, they just continue on with what they have.
But I mean, what rate are we paying as the city? Is it a COBRA rate that we have to pay?
We pay a hundred percent.
No, 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 yeah. I get you, but I don't know if it's the same rate they pay for other employees, or do we pay a higher rate because they're retiring?
Same rate for other employees, as I understand it right now.
Okay, that's all.
And do we have a cutoff of how many years? Like if somebody retired at almost forty-five, would we go all the way to fifty-five, or how would that work?
The criteria is.
Well, you're not going to have anybody that way, because they'd be, they'd have to hire at fifteen to stay till they're forty-five.
They've got thirty years.
So you're saying thirty years?
No, not necessarily. You have to state, these criteria are at a minimum. Ten years of credible service, age fifty-five, and they had to have had the insurance for three continuous years prior to retirement. Twenty years of credible service.
Mr. Key, Mr. Keys.
He can't hear.
Thank you.
Twenty years of credible service, age fifty-five, at least one year of continuous insurance coverage, or thirty years of credible service and at least one year of continuous service. They gotta be receiving the TCRS retirement. They can't be eligible for Medicare. You can, they can get a supplemental policy after they reach Medicare under the Tennessee program.
Kind of like a COBRA type, continuous.
But it's not going to be as expensive as COBRA.
Right, but something similar to that.
Yeah, but it's, it's just the regular insurance, it's the same that the employees have.
But we can set the criteria to a higher standard, can we not?
You could set them at a.
Instead of vested in.
Probably not a higher standard. You can set it at a more, less than this, you have to meet the, at least this criteria.
Right, so we could do a thirty-year retirement, after thirty years, we could pick it up from there and so on.
You could.
And that would probably lower the. That figure you gave us was for the thirty years?
And that's what our current insurance is right now, per employee.
About forty thousand a year?
Wow. And just understand, it'll go from, anywhere from four to a twenty percent increase a year. Insurance is.
Just happens, it's going to go up, it's not going to go down.
Um, I, I think this is worth looking at, especially the thirty years of servicing. Um, I'd just like to see, um, a few different options of how to do it, and, and really think it through, and not make a good wise decision on this, especially if people have been working for thirty years. I'm not opposing it at all, I just want to, I don't want to have a, you know, jump to conclusions, vote on snap vote, yeah. I'd like to see some numbers, but if we could, so, I mean, I don't know if we need to make a motion to this, but, um, to get the numbers, so, and Bill, a question?
A question about the sixty-five, because, you know, retirement age is now, looks like, could be sixty-six, sixty-seven. So are we cutting it off at sixty-five?
That's when they actually qualify for Medicare.
Medicare, right. I think that'd be what, depends on when you were born.
Yeah, but.
What your retirement age is.
I think sixty-five is the magic number now for Medicare.
For Medicare, it is not Social Security.
No, well, that's what I'm talking about, Social Security.
Yeah, Medicare starts at sixty-five, so they would be able to come off, this is trying to go on in Medicare and not lose any money. Actually, it'd be cheaper for them to go on Medicare. I'd like to make a motion that we table this to next meeting.
Regular meeting.
Uh, regular meeting, not, not special call, and have, uh, CFO, Giselle, work up the numbers on how many people we've got ready to retire, what the cost is in the city, and maybe some different type options, maybe a hundred percent, ninety percent, you know, just something, different percentages that we may want to pay.
Can you include in that motion?
Okay, we have a motion and second, any, any discussion on that?
Okay, I, I'd like to make an amendment that includes.
Wait, who seconded that? Thank you.
Um, he includes different projections for five years out, ten years out, fifteen years out, like, just some different projections on, basically, because, again, this is something that people say, oh, we're going to get, um, health insurance if we work here thirty years. The whole goal of that is to keep retention.
Logically.
And so it will get more expensive, but we'll get more, you know, so, but we needed to see those predictions, that was my amendment.
Seconds.
Okay, so the amendment would be to, to more.
Three to five year, start at three to five year projection.
I know.
Well, I, five, five to fifteen year predictions, I don't think.
Five to fifteen year projections, that's the amendment, uh, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so the.
Amendment passed.
A moment, yes, the motion with the amendment is now, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of Scott doing the flow of projection that's required by Mr. Babcock and Mr. Evil? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, now we go to the new business. All righty, um, we have good news, we have Derek, would you like to tell them about our new hire? Well, and of course, they have to approve it, yes.
Right. Uh, just adding the budget to, uh, to add another person to the public works side. Y'all approved that budget tonight, so, saying that, uh, we did go ahead and do some interviews, just on the chance that y'all would, and I'd like to present to you tonight to hire, uh, I don't know if I've got that in my packet or not.
No, I didn't have any.
Uh, his name is Roger Fowles. He's a really good guy, he's a veteran, um.
Well, and I believe we were, we were actually short one man on that side, that's the position. So that money was actually already in the budget for that person, yes?
Making motion to hire Mr. Ball.
Okay, motion to hire, second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and we have one more. We can discuss this or table it till next time, we've got some estimates in the book that passed around, uh, Tim, the Public Works, all of several companies around the area for the rubber mulch we were talking about to replace the wood mulch under the playground. That's it, in that black book with some samples.
If y'all get that out and fill up it, those corners on there are sharpened razors. That's not a big good idea.
No, I'm not sure if that's a, just a color sample or the actual sample sample, I'm not sure how that works.
I sure wouldn't put out a product like that for, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I would just, and again, um, I think, uh, Mayor, I am in favor of approving the playground, but the way our floodplain is and our water, it's called flood, it's floodway and floodplain. The way our, the way our city park sits currently is it's technically in a floodway. I'm a way to learn, it's okay.
This is similar to what they have on the elementary school playground, and, uh, but I don't know if it's the same brand. That's just, it's the only people who sent us examples.
That too.
Tom smelled it.
Wait, what'd you smell?
Yes. It's stuck.
But, but Tim got on, uh, did a lot of research.
What's the price on that?
That one's about thirteen thousand. What's, and all we're talking about, it's not really changing anything out there, we're just taking out.
Thirteen thousand?
But wait a minute, we're taking out the old wood mulch and just replacing that four inches, that's all it is, in there with the rubberized, is that right, Derek? Kind of what we're, now, that's the highs, because this is not made from recycled tire. We've got several in there from recycled tires, but.
You're not supposed to be able to use that anymore, because they have the wires.
Yeah, they don't got that really. The other company, just let me finish, the other company that makes this is twenty-something thousand for that same thing that we were looking at. But, but you're right, it is a floodplain, and that's part of the reason there's so much water.
Is there another, something that you could put onto it that wouldn't float away?
Concrete.
I mean, like.
No, I.
Like that much, we just go down the river.
The problem is you have to put something that the water will go through, you can't put something solid like, so, yes?
Okay, and I'm not trying to, again, preferences, I would like to improve our playground, and I don't, I'm not going to talk about the cost yet, that's all that's going. But where we are with our city park is we are technically have a city park that is in a floodway. The reason is, is like, you got the park here, right? And this part of the park is considered floodway.
What part is that?
That's near the river.
Yes.
So, and then this is a floodplain, okay? And floodplanes have a lot of restrictions on them, but not even close to the amount of the impossible floodway. The floodway makes it almost impossible to do anything, including putting rubber, just even putting little rubber things down. Because we are connected to a floodway, because, and it, they go off of how the parcel property is. So, let's say we want to do this project, something we would maybe have to do first before we do any project, because we probably want to do this project and many more projects in this park. But we would probably need to parcel this out and give it a little bit of a buffer, so that it's two parcels. Still, both parcels are owned by the city, we own both of them, but that way, we don't have to go by standards of floodway, we can go by standards of floodplain. Does that, does that make sense to y'all? And that way, it makes it a lot easier to do projects like this. But what's, what.
I wouldn't say a lot.
Not a lot easier.
Easier.
Easier. It's, it's very hard to do any project on it, uh, regardless, but it's way harder to do it that way. So what I would recommend is, is possibly habling this and then motioning, and I'll, I'll make a vote.
Well, but if we just, maybe I'm wrong, Derek, the problem there is not so much whether it's floodplain or floodway, it's just all containing water. And that's what we have to cure, is that it's retaining water, whether we reflood.
The problem is it's clay dirt.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it won't bring.
It doesn't matter, it's what we call it, it just, it's retaining water.
But any improvements we do to this floodway, which is what it is right now, goes through, thirteen thousand dollars might be a low number compared to all the engineering and everything, and if I'm wrong, let me know. It, that might be the cheap part of it, of just putting down the thirteen thousand dollars with it. So what I would recommend is that we table this discussion, and we put on the agenda for next council meeting, is possibly splitting this off, so that when we want to make future pro, park improvements, it's, it's going to be not a lot easier, but easier. Go ahead, Steve.
Does that not have to go to the planning?
It absolutely does.
So I would make the recommendation that we send it to the planning commission to see exactly how we have to separate it, so we make ones up.
All right, well, um, I will, I'll make that motion then, that we send this to the planning commission on the concern of the floodway, floodplain,